Good evening. And I welcome everyone to our regular city council meeting. And ask our city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry is absent at this time, but will be joining us shortly. Councilmember Budge?
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sander is absent at this time, but he will be joining us shortly. And Mayor McGarvey?
Here.
Thank you. And our city clerk to announce the meeting video recording and playback schedules, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, June 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, June 23rd at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Very good. Thank you. Well, this evening we have Diane Rogers lead us in the pledge. And since our chaplain wasn't able to make it tonight, I'm going to invite you to remain standing and we'll have a moment of silence for everyone. We all have something that is dear to us all, so Diane.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going on to presentations. I'm going to call on Rancho Cordova Public Works staff Ruba and Quoc to deliver a presentation, please, on Ollie.
This is Ruba Somerpoof from the Public Works Department. Well, we are here to present on redefining the future of transportation. So today's presentation goals are to inform about Ollie and also inform the council about our efforts so far. And also about, provide more information about Ollie pilot in Rancho Cordova.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, council members. So what is Ollie? Well, Ollie was, it's a self-driving, fully autonomous shuttle developed by Robotic Research. It's green, low-speed, fully-electric shuttle. It's been deployed in Germany, Australia, and parts of the U.S., travels on pre-designated routes, and it's a 30% 3D-printed. Some of the features that Ollie has, it's an eight-seater shuttle, doesn't have a steering wheel, it's self-driving with computer screen, it's wheelchair-accessible, it stops for people, bikers, squirrels, and turkeys, has stop controls onboard for emergencies, and a human onboard attendant by locomotors.
So what are Rancho Cordova's efforts have been for autonomous shuttle implementation so far? We started participation in Secog's first civic lab almost two years ago. And at that civic lab, we also collaborated with SAC State to learn more about the implementation of autonomous shuttle. And we also have submitted a civic lab project funding request to Secog right after completing the first civic lab. And then we, later, Ollie Challenge application was solicited by locomotors both in Phoenix and Sacramento, and we have submitted an Ollie Challenge application to locomotors. And we also received a commitment from Secog for our funding request for Rancho Cordova to have a pilot for autonomous shuttle project. Then based on that, we also started discussions with the locomotors for Rancho Cordova pilot. So what are the next steps for Rancho Cordova? We have coordinated with locomotors on possible routes with the employment center application in mind in Rancho Cordova. And we have collaborated with Secog for Ollie deployment in Rancho Cordova after SAC State. As some of you may know, the SAC State recently had a three-month pilot with Ollie. So we also have received commitment from Secog to fund this particular Ollie pilot project in Rancho Cordova. And we are in the process of starting this pilot project in Rancho Cordova in mid-July. So what does this deployment mean for Rancho Cordova? This will be the first employment center case study for Ollie in California and also in the U.S. And it's also the first multiple public-private partnerships for autonomous pilot project in the region, in the Sacramento region. It will help us provide data collection, and it will give us opportunity to study public acceptance and also provide us a testing opportunity. It will help the city to study effectiveness of autonomous shuttle as a future mobility option. And later on, you'll also be hearing about our mobility master plan update, and you'll see some of this new technology listed in there. So it's also second in the region to deploy a fully automated shuttle. And we also will have an opportunity to utilize cities' investments in smart technology in the ITS transportation system that we have invested $5.5 million recently in the last few years. And we also have, will have opportunities for future public roadway deployments when the DMV regulations allow that. Right now, there are still some hiccups with the DMV regulations.
So the proposed route that we were looking to study is around the employment center. It's internal routing. The blue circles represent where the stops are going to be, and then the star in the middle is where we're going to plan to charge and also store the shuttle when it's not in operation. We've gone through several iterations with route planning, and we found that using this use-case scenario, it's going to provide the city with the best benefit. And that concludes our presentation, and we're willing to answer any questions you guys may have.
I just think this is the coolest thing ever, bringing a robot vehicle into, so good job, crew. I like that we're on the cutting edge, love that we're on the bleeding edge of this. What are they trying to prove by having it go around a business district that people will jump on and off? Because now I have to go and rent an office there just to jump on Ollie to be driven around in a circle. So what are they hoping to get out of it?
So we want to test, get public sentiment and their understanding of autonomous shuttle.
So right now, for Ollie, they do have some restrictions as far as going on a public street. So they wanted to test an employment center, and this being an employment center which has a huge campus and also across the street from the city hall, we wanted to use this opportunity to test a business, you know, employment center business case, which they haven't done before. And so it gives us still opportunities to understand the acceptance, public acceptance, and also, you know, there is a lot of IT-type of employees and employers who are more willing to test new technology, so this will give us an opportunity to do that as well. And also, you know, bring this to Rancho Cordova where we will be able to do this as a first phase and understand things better. And our goal is eventually to also have a phase two where we would be able to do this on a public roadway as the DMV regulations allow that.
So my question's a little more complicated. Are there, is that the, is that the most logical, call it super block, to use that in? Are there corporations or businesses or companies in there that are in multiple buildings?
Yes, there are multiple employers in different buildings. There are state employers, and I think there is also different private companies.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not asking the question correctly. Okay, so let's think out White Rock between, or International between Prospect Park and Kilgore. Delta Dental is in four or five buildings out there, and they have a little shuttle that runs back and forth between the buildings all the time. It's just a little, it's a gem. I think it's a gem. Okay, so that's because you've got people who, in one building, who need to go visit their colleagues or whatever's going on in another building. You could say the same about the VSB campus across, over here. You've got multiple buildings all in one company. But if all four or five of those buildings over there are individual people, why would somebody on this side want to visit the building catty-corner from them? And why would they take Ollie? Why would they not stay in their own building?
So the route that Quoc was just showing actually shows the stops at multiple locations. And there may be some interaction between different employers that are located in there, but there are some that probably don't need much interaction between each of them. However, this is more of a test case where, like I said, maybe somewhat to figure out the acceptance, but also, it's not probably a completely utility case here. It's more of testing the new technology at the same time, you know, see, we have opportunities to study the safety and also, you know, how well we can use the new technology as a mobility option. So there are some opportunities, like you said, maybe for interaction where people might go from one building to the other, but it's more for technology testing, I would say, and data collection.
Okay, so you're hoping that people will ride it because it's cute and clever?
Yes.
Okay, and that's fine, all right? That's fine. But if you compare this, for instance, to the VSB campus, or as I said, to Delta Dental, you know, we all assume that everybody who works here for Covered California only goes to work in their building, and they probably have a cafeteria unless they walk across the street and eat at one of our 6+24 restaurants, okay? Or, you know, who's in here, who's in here, and who's in here? Unless somebody in there's got the best cafeteria in the world, and I, it's my impression that somebody right about here recently remodeled and opened an outdoor cafe in their building, then why in the world would anybody do anything other than wave at this little thingy and say, "Oh, how cute."
So some of the folks, I think they park in different locations and walk to different buildings, and this may give them an opportunity to take the shuttle and, you know, go to the different buildings. Or maybe, like you said, they would, they would just be curious to ride on it and maybe ride it too. And being across from the city hall, I think also gives us an opportunity for the public as well to go check it out and test the new technology and probably feel more confident about the new technology options and, you know, as a future mobility option, which is coming. It may be a few years down the road.
Sure. Well, and I do understand, I mean, after all, we tried twice to get a field trip to go over to SAC State, and we got rained out each time. And of course, this is a time of year where we don't have to worry about them getting rained out. So that should be fairly easy, but you're right, I'd like to ride it. I just hope the people who work in those buildings want to ride it also.
Can I ask a quick question on safety? Just really quick, what's the speed it's going to be cruising around the, not that I don't think it's the coolest thing ever, like, I love the automated robot, don't get me wrong. Okay, I can walk faster, okay, just making sure that we're not, like, releasing something like, I'm not a citizen, get hit by Ollie, and then I get to talk about why I released a deadly robot in Rancho.
This is still kind of in testing phase, so their speeds range anywhere from 10 to 25 miles max, but I think it may be around, at SAC State, I think the max they were running were 10 miles per hour. So it might be similar speeds. And there are also restrictions. To answer one of Linda's questions also, why is it not, you know, we're not deploying it somewhere else? It also has limitations in terms of distance. Right now, it has very short distances, it can go without being charged again. So that's also a challenge. So there are some challenges right now we may have to overcome in the future as the technology evolves and there's more testing done, and hopefully, you know, it'll be useful for, I mean, our primary goal is eventually to get autonomous shuttle from one of the light rail stations all the way to our employment center.
Sure.
That would be the ideal situation. Unfortunately, when we actually submitted the application to Secog, that was the application we have provided them.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, there's no technology that could do it right now, so this is something that Secog is providing the funding for us, and we wanted to test, and hopefully, we can study more, learn from it, and also collect some data which we could use for our future phases and applications.
So for those of us with electric cars, how far will it go on a charge? How many miles?
So right now, I think it's less than a mile, right, each time?
How much?
It's less than a mile or so.
No, there's a little more time in operation. It can operate about four hours before it has to recharge. But we're going to be running two shuttles with this pilot project.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, they can go on with the charge for longer time, but distance-wise, they can't go too far.
Okay.
Yeah. Welcome.
Thank you. And I missed part of the presentation, but I think it's really interesting. I know this has been at SAC State, it's been at Cal Expo and a few other places where there's a lot of heavy pedestrian movement happening. Is this the first business park?
Yes.
That they've tested? Okay. So I think it's interesting. I mean, yeah, it'd be great to figure out at some point, how do you get people from the business park to restaurants, dry cleaning, the banks, things like that, especially on days like today, and I just came from playing golf, and I would have loved one of these to take me from hole to hole to hole, because being outside today was miserable.
You didn't have a coat.
I don't have a coat, I'm not putting it on. So I think this is fascinating, and I'm really excited that we have a chance to do it.
I have a question, something that looks to me like it would be something that could be helpful to some of the people in the wheelchairs and like that, since it's made to handle that sort of thing. I thought that would be, in addition to being clever and something new and all that sort of thing, it might actually be useful to them. And since we're just doing it in the parking lot, and they're still doing a lot of testing in this pilot program, they're not going to have it on the streets. So it could go almost from one end of Prospect Park where they are right now, all the way to the other end of Prospect Park. It's all according to how many connections they could make, I think. But that would be a good long way. Right now, they're going around just these four buildings across the street from us. But I would think it's something they could do a lot further than that, all the way across to the other end of Prospect Park.
Yeah, hopefully, in the future, they could do that. Right now, like Quoc was talking about, this is, this is going to run only on a pre-designated route, and it has to study the route for three weeks before they can even actually deploy it. So it has to be a route that's actually pre-designated for now. But in the future, I think there will be more opportunities for them to travel on public streets and probably do what you're suggesting.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to make a comment. Wanted to give kudos to our Public Works team for pursuing this. One thing that I'd like to point out, that in addition to the coolness factor that we have heard from the council members, this also has a scientific reason. You know, the work, the study that's done through these kind of shuttle services helps the companies to perfect the game, and the U.S. Department of Transportation is interested in this information, Caltrans is interested in this information, and the entire technology relies on the kind of findings that we have through studies and pilot programs like this. So thank you for being a part of it, and thank you for Rancho Cordova being the first business park in the region to try it.
Very good. Thank you. And going on to item 5.1, we have calling Rancho Cordova Neighborhood Services Supervisor, Ryan Taylor, to introduce two new employees.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Ryan Taylor, Neighborhood Services Supervisor with the Neighborhood Services Division. We have two employees to introduce tonight. To my left is Elena Bute. She's our code enforcement technician. Elena will be providing complaint intake, education for the residents and the community on programs and municipal codes that we have. To my right is Chris Piva. Chris is our new animal services officer. Chris may, you may be familiar with Chris, he was also part of our homeless outreach team. Chris previously worked with MCE. Going back to Elena, Elena's coming to us from the City of Sacramento Parking Enforcement. She is also a reserve firefighter trainee with City of SAC. And with that, I'll let Elena say a couple, a few words.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm not going to say too, too much. I don't have a speech, but I would like to say I appreciate the fact that you, as a city of Rancho Cordova, that you even take the time to introduce your new employees. So I appreciate that. I'm very happy to be here, been here for about a month now, and I'm very excited to be a part of the team. So thank you for the opportunity.
I would have to agree with Elena here. There really does seem to be a family environment to the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm really excited to be here as a part of the team and look forward to contributing to the continued success of the city.
Very good. Excellent, thank you. That was very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call on Rancho Cordova Facilities employee Tina Walker to introduce two new employees.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff, and guests tonight. Get the pleasure of being here in a nice, cool-conditioned room, clean, lighting's working great, and kind of a chance to show you that some of the people behind the scenes that keep that stuff in that condition. So first, I'm going to introduce Tina Walker, our facility services worker, and she's going to get to supervise one of these new employees, so I thought I'd let her do the introduction for Shawna.
Mayor Robert McGarvey, city council, city staff and guests. Thank you for having me here tonight to introduce our very first full-time facility attendant, Shawna Morgan. She provides excellent customer service to our guests and city staff that use our community rooms and also do off-site events. Her can-do attitude and her attention to detail makes her a superstar. So welcome, Shawna.
Hello, good evening. I want to thank you for having me here today. And for most of you that don't know me, my name is Shawna Morgan, and I have been with the city of Rancho Cordova for two years. I started off with a part-time employee in the facilities department and got on with full-time in December of 2018, and I felt welcomed by all the city employees. My responsibilities are setting up for events, onsite and offsite events, event coverage, tidying the, all the rooms, restocking the rooms, and maintenance duties as well, and other duties above that. I am a single mother of three and resident of Rancho Cordova for seven years. The position has helped me and my family tremendously, and I want to thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to many more years with the city.
Now I get to introduce another person to our team, Matt Thomas. He's going to be a big part as we kind of retool a little bit, and he's going to be a big help with a lot of our hazardous materials plans, just a lot of bureaucratic stuff we have to do, just like everyone else with elevators and generators and such. So I'll let Matt tell you a little bit about himself.
Good evening. Thanks for having me here today, I appreciate it. And as a 14-year resident of the city of Rancho Cordova, I'm really excited to be able to come to work for the city. I've been very involved in the community. I'm a soccer coach. My kids go to Sunrise Elementary out in Anatolia, and I've really enjoyed watching the city grow, and I'm really looking forward to being part of the future development. And I believe that the city of Rancho Cordova is going wonderful places, and I've really enjoyed my first couple of weeks and look forward to many more. Thanks.
Very good, thank you. Very good, welcome to all of our new employees. And I'm going to call on Rancho Cordova Economic Development Manager Amanda Norton to introduce new employee Laura Fickel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm very pleased to introduce, I'm Amanda Norton with this Economic Development Division, and I'm very pleased tonight to introduce Laura Fickel. She's our newest employee. Today is her first day. She comes to us from a property business improvement district known as the Power &amp; Alliance. It's the largest industrial district here in the Sacramento region, and one of the great things she does is a lot of business recruitment and retention efforts there, as well as working really seamlessly with the jurisdiction on behalf of the businesses. So we are delighted to have her here with us, and I'll have her say a few things about herself.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. That was a lot of my speech, but no, it's good. I've been a resident of Rancho Cordova since 2011. We bought in Stone Creek, and then in 2015, we bought the seventh house built in Somerset Ranch. So it's been a pleasure watching that community build up around there, and I was making the commute to Power &amp; since then, and I've just been watching this place grow every, you know, every week, every month. It's just been amazing, and so I'm really excited to be a part of that now. And I also did a lot of work with transportation, and I think they're very strongly tied to economic development. So I'm excited to bring my experience but learn a ton from all these wonderful people. Thank you.
Let's see, I've got 5.2, introducing a new employee. Rancho Cordova Community Services Supervisor, Ryan Taylor, to introduce Chris Pavia. I thought we already did that once. Okay. I'm going to put a comment, then. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at the time when completing and submitting a speaker card to the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up for the podium for the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments to three minutes or less and to state name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. Does the city clerk have any comments, any cards?
I have one speaker card for Sharon Judy.
Good evening, I'm Sharon Judy. I live in Rancho Villa. I'm two blocks away from Rootier on Rockingham. It looks nice, but it's got issues. The curbing that's been put in. I went to work this morning to Rootier. I had a tight turn, and I drive a Prius, turning right to go over the overpass. And if there had been a bigger vehicle than that, I could not have made the turn. So I'm just kind of bringing that to everybody's attention, and thank you for your time.
Can I, hi, again.
Hi.
You're seeing Rootier in what?
Rockingham Drive.
Going west and turning right onto Rootier to go north?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I haven't been over there recently, so, okay.
You should drive it.
I used to live around the corner. Is Albert in the room or somebody from, there, you might want to chat with him and share your thoughts. You might want to chat with him and share your thoughts a little bit more.
We chat constantly.
Okay, good. Glad you two know each other.
Very good. Do we have any others?
We do not.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak and didn't turn in a card yet? Okay, I don't see anyone else. Okay, then we'll have closed the public comment and go on to council reports. Donald?
I'll be brief. I've done a bit of traveling for work, and so I haven't had a lot of council functions to be at. But one thing that I haven't shared yet at a council meeting is about a month and a half ago, I joined the Children's, Children's Museum's Board of Directors. And as we start to look at what the build-out of the new side of that building looks like, one of the things is we've started to work with an architect and also working with a fund development consultant to look at strategic planning and board development. And at the last meeting, I was appointed the new Chair of the Board Governance Committee that's gonna look at updating the bylaws and expectations of the board, because they haven't been done in 10 years. And so, a lot of cool stuff to work on over there and really excited to represent the city in their new endeavors. That's it for me.
Very good. Thank you, Donald. Linda?
So I think probably all I can report is we've had three graduations in the last 10 days. Everybody in our family has boomed up to some other, to some other level, which is really great. And I attended the Regional Transit Report. The, the, the project to extend free bus rides to school kids got approved at the city of Sacramento. And I know that the general manager is out trying to meet with all the jurisdictions in the area to see if everyone would literally get on board in making that happen throughout the county or throughout their service area. And then Friday, Maria and I attended a really super event along with the police chief and the fire department and several people from the police department, actually. The US Army had its 244th birthday, and they did it in the Village Green Park. And they had a, they had a couple of cakes and some very nice comments about the history of the Army. And we presented them with a key to the city. I told them that even though Rancho Cordova has always been an Air Force town, that we want to, we're pleased to be there to celebrate with them and certainly welcome everybody with the US Army to town also. So, that's it.
Very good. Thank you. And Garrett?
Had a great chamber breakfast with the, all the new businesses that are coming into Rancho Cordova. It's actually great to see a plentiful amount of businesses come this way. Then I went and met with Choices, Choices First Person Certified. So there's this group of nonprofit that basically helps if you have disabled children or adults to stay in their homes and stay there. And so they, they basically offer that service and take care of them. It's a great group, and I'm gonna see what I can do for the city to kind of come alongside them. Jersey Mike's opened, so whoever wants to get a sandwich, it is delicious. And I was eating there with my group. And then, of course, quarterly meeting with the Cabling Commission. We are in tons of lawsuits, and we are trying to get more money out of the ISPs, which is Internet Service Providers, to give money back to the cities. And so we're actually in seven that I can count right now. So hopefully those can settle sometime soon, and then we'll get the money that's rewarded to us. And then SDA went down for them, and then we weren't able to quorum, so we pushed. That's what I did.
Very good. Thank you. We'll have David, maybe when he, get him soon does his report if he has some extra things to do. I'm sure he does. I wanted to congratulate the Leadership Class of 13. We had that graduation, and they were very enthusiastic about their goal to name some streets after some local heroes. Ones that have died, our police officer that was killed in front of the Pet Boys and some other things that have happened like that. But it's going to be quite an interesting class. They're going to follow through on that. They're gonna be working on this in September and October, as well as just after the graduation they just had. So it's not something that's gonna be, okay, it's done. They have a lot, a lot of things to do still. That leadership is very helpful, and you learn so much about Rancho Cordova. There are some openings, I understand, in the Class 14 that's coming up. So if anyone has any interest in their own, then talk to the Chamber and see what they can do to help you about this. Join the Leadership Class. We're in Class, I'm in Class Number Two. There's others that have been going on through, but it's in the, it's a great program. Tomorrow, I'll be working, going to the Mosquito Vet Control Board, so I don't have anything really new on that. Maybe I'll have that after tomorrow. I think that's what I've got right now, and go on to our City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief. Just wanted to let the council and the community know that we have a delegation from the city that would be traveling to Denver, Colorado to present at the All-America City Award. This is a very prestigious award that we have been shortlisted. We are a finalist, and wish us luck. We are, we are working on, on a presentation and a, and skit that our team has been working on. We're taking a group of students from Cordova High to present, to co-present with, with some city staff. So it's very exciting, and it's extremely rewarding for those who have been involved in this process. And hopefully, we can receive the award and another, another great accomplishment for this community.
Cyrus, you're absolutely right. It was such, such an incredible experience to be able to participate with that team in 2010. And we certainly wish everybody who is going very well and good luck. And I'm assuming it'll be taped? Maria says yes?
Yes, it will be taped, and it will be-
So that we'll all get to watch it?
We would have live broadcast and also live announcements. So we will, we will hear about the results at around eight o'clock Sunday evening. So if we order whenever, you will shoot, you will be here from us instantly.
It's too bad we don't have a bell to ring. Thank you, Cyrus.
May have something left from the Sacramento Kings. All right, very good. Thank you, Cyrus. Going on to the Consent Calendar Items. They consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff unless a member of the council wishes to pull on item from individual, for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Do we have any?
I'll move approval of the Consent Calendar Items 9.1 through 9.12. But I have a request on 9.7. This project that's called Ranch has been kicking around for a good 10 years. And we hear it, it seems like, once a month, I mean, once a year. And if they're really going to do some specific environmental work, I wonder if staff would bring it back to us so that we could get an update on it and see actually what's being planned before they start a really expensive environmental process.
This is the one I'm thinking of, that K-Hov one?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and I think in light of some other conversations that, at least I've had with the city manager, that may affect what product is being offered or allowed to be built there, we should probably have a revisit of it soon.
Definitely.
Well, and I say relative, like, if they're gonna move forward on spending money on something, they should probably take our temperature again, considering what other product offerings might be coming to the market soon.
Because we know it's not an inexpensive process, you know? It's typically well over $100,000. And, and we need to make sure that whatever it is, this de novo or whatever this planning group is, is going to review as the, as the product that we're looking for.
Yeah, because I know, the last time we talked about this, we talked about a 55-plus active living community. And there may be, there, and we talked a little about this. There may be other developments that would change the, the headcounts down there and affect the, the production, or the, the building or the, the building of, of other elementary schools and high schools down there based on too much of this product in, in that community. So I think it's a conversation to have again before we give everybody the green light.
So I'm hearing a nod enough had by other council members, so we plan on probably an August presentation?
This would be great.
Yeah. I think it's only fair for the developer to understand what our expectations may be, considering what other things have been greenlighted.
So some, either the first or the second meeting in August, we bring a presentation to you.
Super. Thank you, Cyrus. So we have a motion in a second then.
So, well, then I'm confused. So we're gonna go ahead and allow them to move forward with this process? Or do we wanna, or do we want to take that item and continue it? Which would be my suggestion.
I think the one option would be for the council to approve this item, but with a note and the caveat that there may be some follow-up discussions with the council to go cautiously on it before they get too deep in.
Okay.
And actually, all we're doing is authorizing the city manager to sign a contract. So if the city manager, when he chats with the project proponent, thinks that he should not sign the contract, then he won't do it.
And in fact, you know, what's before you tonight is an extension of time. The contract had already been approved by the council, and they are extending the term from June of this, this year to June of next year.
Oh, okay. All right.
Great.
So, super.
Good catch, though, Linda. I, I'm glad you brought that up.
So we're not changing, it's going from 9.1 to 9.12?
Correct.
Just a correction. I said June of next year is December of this year. So it's extending the term to December 31st of this year.
Super. Thank you.
Righty. You have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanders absent, and Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Go on to item number 10, Consent Public Hearing Items. Consent Public Hearing Items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item from individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I'm gonna open this to public hearing and see if we have any cards or anyone speaking on this.
I do not.
Okay, anyone in the audience would like to speak on this item? Okay, you're seeing none. Close the public hearing, and we have a motion to-
I will move approval of Consent Cal, Consent Public Hearing Item 10.1.
Motion to second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge. Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sanders absent, Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Then item number 11, ask the city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Quick Quack Car Wash, Conditional Use Permit and Minor Design Review, Project Number DD 9801, located at Folsom Boulevard between Zimfandel Drive and Don Juan Drive.
All right. Have our staff report, please.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey, members of the council. Darcy Galar with the Planning Department. Before you this evening is Quick Quack Car Wash, Conditional Use Permit and Minor Design Review. The Minor Design Review is for a new 3,590-square-foot car wash building. It's a self-serve car wash. The Conditional Use Permit is a requirement of the Folsom Boulevard specific plan. On the screen before you, you'll see the general location. It's along Folsom Boulevard, just east of the Walgreens and just south of some residential neighborhoods to the north there. Moving along, the first item that we'll talk about this evening is the downtown planning area. So as you can see before you on the screen, the downtown planning area is part of the general plan. And in the area where there's a, it's hard to tell with the screen pointer here, but there's a circle that says TOD, and that's our Transit Oriented Development, and there's a star there. So the project site itself lies within that circle noted as a TOD site. So what that means, so Transit Oriented, Oriented Development, we're looking for more higher intense uses, horizontal and vertical development, uses that generate pedestrians, people walking in the area, less auto-dependent type uses. It also is hoping to generate additional uses that bring people to the area to live and to work, to bring some revitalization and vitality to the area. So when we're looking at general plan consistency on projects, and we do this for all projects that we process, is we're taking a look at general plan policies, goals, and actions that are in the general plan, and how a specific project implements that. So in the case of the Quick Quack Car Wash, there's three specific goals within our general plan that the project is not consistent with. The first one being the most important one that's on the screen before you, which is in our land use element of the general plan. And this specific goal and policy and implementing action items talks about patterns of development when we're talking about a transit-oriented development site. So when we're looking at that, we're looking at higher density and intensity of land uses and development within one-quarter mile of a major transit station. So this particular site, which I can back up, so you can just kind of see, we have two transit stations within the area, the closest one being the Zimfandel Station. And then the next one is the Cordova Town Center Station that's over to the east on Sunrise Boulevard. So this project site is not only within this TOD node, but is within a quarter-mile of two existing transit stations. So it's inconsistent with our first goal within our general plan as it's not integrating into, in developing into a TOD site. A self-serve car wash is what we would call an auto-centric site. It's dependent upon people driving to the site. It does not offer an ability for somebody to walk there to get a service. So in that case, it's inconsistent with that first goal that we have within the general plan. Additionally, we have two other goals within the general plan that help promote walkability and mixed-use development that the project is not consistent with as well. The next layer of inconsistency that we'll take a look at is the Folsom Boulevard specific plan. So the project site is within that specific plan that was adopted by the council some years back. And as you can see on the screen, I'll just point out here, it just sort of shows again the, the two stations that we have and the project site, which is near this corner of Zimfandel and Folsom Boulevard. So again, when reviewing projects that are within a specific plan or in a general plan, we're taking a look at the various goals that were set for that plan. And in this case, there's six distinct goals for the Folsom Boulevard specific plan that we look at projects for. And if you take a look at the screen, what you'll see here is a lot of these sort of revolve around revitalization, bringing new businesses to the area, pedestrian connectivity, bringing bicyclists there, building upon the transit uses that you have there, a way to revitalize Folsom Boulevard and bring some additional housing to that area. So when we're looking at a use that involves auto, auto-dependency in order for it to thrive, it's not meeting the intent of the six goals that are within the Folsom Boulevard specific plan. The final layer in terms of consistency is our zoning code. So Title 23 talks about a transit-oriented development overlay and the consistency with that. So when we're reviewing projects that were within a quarter-mile of a light rail station, there's certain development standards that we're looking at. The one standard in this TOD overlay that the project site is not hitting is what we call the floor-area ratio. So this is where we're hitting our intensity and maximum density of a particular site. So for this particular site, on the screen, you'll see some math of how we calculate what that floor-area ratio is. So in order to meet that intent of the zoning code, we're looking at a 25,000-square-foot building. So you get that with, on a site like this, going taller rather than staying as a single-story building. The building itself that's being proposed is 3,590 square feet, so it's far below what that floor-area ratio is. So additionally, just kind of backing up, while the project itself, if you looked at it in terms of the development standards that are in the Folsom Boulevard specific plan, yes, it might be meeting the setback requirements. It may be meeting landscape requirements. However, it's inconsistent with various goals and policies within our general plan, as well as within the Folsom Boulevard specific plan. In terms of any kind of environmental review that might have been done on the project, SEQA does not require environmental review for projects that are being rejected or disapproved. So at this time, we have- So at this time, we have not done any environmental review on this particular project. Recommended motions by staff for council to consider tonight is to find that project exempt from CEQA and adopt a resolution that would deny the conditional use permit and minor design review for the project due to the inconsistencies that we have with the general plan, Folsom Boulevard specific plan, and Title twenty-three, the zoning code. That completes my presentation. The applicant is here with a team to answer any questions that you might have. I believe they also have their own presentation to give.
Okay, ask if anyone on the council has any questions right now? Okay, let's bring the...
I have a couple of questions for us.
Okay, go.
So when I was reading it over, I saw letters. The letters were mostly for people that were denying it, and they said, "Thank you for reaching out to us." Who else did we, were they the only group that we reached out to? Like, do we reach out to people that actually would affirm having a car wash in that area?
So those comment letters are generated from when we route a project. So we route, it's from our initial routing period that goes out, and that's how those projects were, or those letters were generated.
Garrett, there's actually a list of at least three dozen agencies and departments and various entities around the county that always get our applications. Every jurisdiction has a standard list because it has to go to, you know, if you think about it logically, obviously you want the police department and the fire department, and sewer, and water, and storm drain, and everybody else to review it. And so that's what she's talking about.
Okay. So the next question is, what would you want there instead?
Well, personally, I don't think I could answer the question of what we would want there instead.
Okay.
But I think a project that would meet the intent and goals of the general plan and the Folsom Boulevard specific plan.
Leaving the land fallow because of, you know, the issues with the homelessness and stuff would be better just to have something there, since it's going to be like another, probably six to ten years before we have anyone. I haven't had anyone of interest actually come to try to get that land. Would it make sense to not have a viable business in place rather than have it just open dirt field?
I think what Garrett's missing is the way in which we have worked so hard over, actually from before cityhood, to convert what had been an old highway to a really viable downtown boulevard. You know, it's not necessarily Main Street, although it functions as Main Street. But when we adopted the Folsom Boulevard specific plan, we probably even went a little overboard in changing land uses. But we were very specific that instead of having gas stations and car washes and motels on every corner, that there would be a much more balanced group of land uses the entire length of the boulevard.
So would we rather have nothing there then for the next ten?
Ms. Mary, if I can make a suggestion, because I would love to get into this too, but I really think it's appropriate to have the applicant and the public comment. And then we could, because I would love to do that, but I think it would only be fair for the applicant and some other folks at least make their case, and then we can have our conversation.
Okay, then we have opened the public hearing. And I said to the clerk, are we having any speaker cards, or the applicants want to speak?
I have six public speaker cards. Do we want to do those first? The applicant? Okay.
Evening, Mayor. Council members and staff, thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate being able to present to you, even considering the current recommendation by staff. I do want to say that I had an opportunity to meet with four out of five of you, and I appreciate that time as well. After that, those meetings, we still made the decision to bring this forward because we really believe in the project. So, and with that, I'll just, I've got a very brief presentation. I apologize in advance if there's some duplication, because I know staff did a great job, so. So just a quick introduction of myself. I'm Ephraim Corona, and I'm with Quick Quack Car Wash. As you know, we're proposing to build a new car wash at this location. And I would like to make one distinction, it's not a self-serve car wash, it's an exterior-only express. For us, a self-serve means that you're getting out of your car, and you're pulling a wand out, and you're washing your car down by yourself inside of some type of a bay. This is actually an exterior-only express where the customer stays in the vehicle, and they ride through, about a three-minute ride to get through the wash. And if you're familiar with the wash that's on Sunrise Boulevard, it's very similar to that, but a much more advanced version of that. The parcel is located on the northeast corner, one parcel east of the northeast corner of Folsom and Zimphandale. There's a picture there, I'm sure all of you are familiar with it. I do have this map here, and we also went ahead and added these rings. These are the quarter-mile rings. And the reason I had two is because there are actually two, there's eastbound and westbound locations. So I just went ahead and showed that just for, just for good measure, so you could see where the rings are and our location, our project's right here.
I'm sorry, what are the rings?
The rings are the quarter-mile around that create the TOD overlay. So I wasn't quite sure where to pinpoint the center of that radius. So I used both of those, both of those stations, one's going eastbound, one's going westbound. Does that make sense? So obviously, the site's a little over an acre, consists of two parcels. The parcel on the north property, about's residential to the north. We did have a neighborhood outreach meeting a few months ago here in this building. Didn't get a whole lot of response, but there were some folks that came out. There were, there were really nobody opposed to the project except for a couple of other agencies that were mentioned before. The corner of one parcel does expand out to Alacantaway, and the one point of contention that we noticed from that meeting was that the neighbors were concerned about the access for cars from Alacantaway onto the parcel. I can kind of go back and show you on that map. It's right up at the top here. There's currently an approach to the road, but it has a barrier. So based on the conversations we had with the neighbors that night, and also with staff, we decided to close it off so that there will be no access to any of the vehicles on Alacantaway. This site has been vacant for many years, and actually for the last ten years has had no interest since us coming to the current property owner. And we're, obviously, want to improve this site with a car wash. The site is zoned, Folsom Boulevard specific plan, commercial mixed-use, which does allow car wash with the use permit. It is within a quarter mile of the RT station, so that creates that transit-oriented development overlay zone. And based on what I read online, city's webpage, that the property owners are allowed to designate or elect to have the TOD over the development standards who precede the Folsom Boulevard specific plan if they choose to. And those standards are relative to density, floor area ratio, and building height. Nothing about a use that's not allowed there. Just taking a quick look of the area surrounding and what's happened in the last few years, and there's been a couple of projects that are also within that TOD overlay zone. One of them is the Popeyes that has a drive-through, which is auto-oriented. The Safeway fueling station also is auto-oriented, obviously, because it's a fueling station. And the Walgreens right next door to us has a drive-through as well. And obviously, you all are familiar with the area, so you know all of the current businesses that are there that are auto-centric. In addition, the Folsom Town Center and the Sunrise Light Rail Station both have designated park and ride areas where vehicles are driven to those locations in order to utilize RT. So they're obviously driving and trading in the area. This is just a quick map showing that one-mile radius and some of the businesses that were listed on the previous slide there. You know, we've done a lot of research, and we do a lot of research for all of our site selection. We like to choose the best locations. This is a very strong trade area, there's a lot of people that are traveling to and from home. There's a lot of people that are traveling to and from work, and there's a lot of people, obviously, across the street and next door to us that are doing a lot of shopping. So it's very strong, has lots of people trading in this area. There's currently no exterior express car wash, so it is underserved based on our research. Vehicles travel in and out of this area every day, whether it's to use the RT or to shop or on their way home. So we're proposing to take advantage of the vehicles that are there. You know, adding a car wash would be adding another service that the current residents in that area don't have, and it's a convenient location for them. You know, we're proposing to invest over four million dollars of improvements in this location that would otherwise remain undeveloped based on the interest in the property now. That area, we did a little bit of quick research on the area up and down the Folsom Boulevard specific plan area, and what we're proposing to develop is less, approximately three percent of all of the available developable real estate there. You know, we believe we've come up with a very attractive and appropriate development. This is an example showing the proposed site plan, and it shows the landscaping that we're proposing. Originally, we had laid out the building towards the middle, which was a little bit more beneficial for our operation. Staff came back to us and said, you know, this is in a specific plan area that really needs to be more pedestrian-friendly, and needs to get the building closer to the street. So we completely redeveloped the site plan, and we took all of the vacuums and put them towards the back of the property, and we brought the building up, so it's within sixteen feet of the back of the walk. So as pedestrians are using the sidewalks, they're going to be walking right next to our building. So we'll have that pedestrian look to it. Obviously, we're washing cars, we're not washing people, so there are going to be vehicles on the lot. We also added a ton of additional landscape. You know, we're screening the building with street trees, which are our requirement. We're taking this back corner where Alacantaway is, and we will be landscaping everything here with trees and with drought-tolerant landscaping so that there's really no reason for any vehicle to try and get through there. Or actually, we're trying to, you know, potentially create a walkway so that people won't loiter there, they'll just walk through if they need to. We would have a pedestrian-friendly or accessible route of travel that would go that direction as well. We're using, we're using a lot of similar materials for the building, the exterior. You know, we're using a series of different colors of stucco, we have different colored trim. We're using a honed face block rather than a standard block, which has got a finish to it. We also took some of the elements from the Walgreens, and we added the brick to the building on the wainscot and on the pilasters. So we believe it's going to be a very complimentary-looking development next to the Walgreens. Obviously, we don't have any of the blue that they have, but we have a little bit more toned-down color scheme than they do. But we believe it will complement the area. On top of, on top of everything that we're, you know, we're doing to try and make this a great development, we're also a sustainable business, and we are in fact the first car wash working with SAC Burke to be certified as sustainable. And I mean, they've certified us based on our water conservation, our energy conservation efforts, our pollution prevention, and our solid waste reduction. We're actually recycling our water as it comes into the wash. I mean, water is a very important resource, and we're good stewards of water because without water, we can't have a business. We're capturing all of our water and recycling it in a series of forty, five hundred gallons of reclaim. That water gets clarified and pumped back into the wash. Any of the water that comes out of the reclaim system and out to the public system does not enter the storm drain system. It goes directly to the public sewer system. And the public sewer system, again, will re-treat what we consider relatively clean water after it's been treated on our mini-water treatment plant on-site. All of our soaps are water-soluble and environmentally friendly. We have done a lot of the environmental research and have presented it to staff. We've done sound studies, we've done traffic reviews, we've done lighting studies, because one of our concerns was we didn't want to create a location where we would have adverse effects to the local environment. Our sound complies with the city guidelines. Our traffic report came back, and there were nothing noted on the traffic report that was adverse. And our lighting studies were done so that we could make sure that we didn't have light spilling over into the neighbors to the north. With the addition of all the landscaping and trees, we're also proposing to put an eight-foot sound wall similar to the wall that Walgreens put up to help. Right now, there's only a wooden fence, I believe it might be six feet tall. We would raise it to eight feet, and it would have sound-reducing efforts to that wall. And in reality, based on all these factors, we're really a unique opportunity to promote an eco-friendly automotive use. Eco-friendly based on SAC Burke's, you know, our partnership with them and their certifications. And I believe it's a, it's a great, like I said, eco-friendly use that we could also put in a transit-oriented area. It's an area where customers are currently trading. They're, it's convenient for them. Right now, those customers that live or work in that area may or may not find it convenient to go to Sunrise, so they could go the other direction, and they'd be taking their business to another city. It would be going to Citrus Heights, or they could go further west and be heading to Sacramento area. So we'd like to give these customers who have reached out to us a convenient location for them to trade and use our service. And I just want to touch briefly on what we do in the community that we're really proud of. You know, here specifically in Rancho Cordova, and with all of our stores, we have a participation with Day at the Wash, and this is an opportunity for anybody that is trying to raise money really to use our car wash so that they can raise funds for their charities. This kind of replaces the washing the car out in the lot where all that detergent and water is going straight to the storm drain. We're actually picking it up and sending it to the sewer and treating that water. We're a Magic Maker sponsor, so we, you know, we sponsor a lot of events like the Kids' Day, Fourth of July celebrations, Veterans' Day celebrations, and things like that, Friday night movies. We are also a sponsor or partner with the Rancho Cordova Chamber for Explore Rancho. We provide free washes for residents that are coming into the area so that they can kind of try out the services and businesses in their city. We also help with a lot of their, the social media events by providing discounted washes. And most recently, we had a very successful fundraiser for the Rancho Cordova Little League. Kind of a larger picture of what we do in our communities, we're part of Volunteers of America, we work in partnership with them. And just last year, we came up with nine hundred backpacks for kids in need, that were kids going to school and didn't have backpacks. We participate and have our own fundraiser, the Duck Dash. We have Twelve Days of Giving, which is at Christmas time, where all of our locations will be taking on toys to support the Toys for Tots effort. We are sponsors, official sponsors of the King's Fifty-Fifty Raffle, and this year, we were able to raise forty-four thousand dollars for local charities. And one of the things that we're very proud of that happens in every city is our one-of-a-kind grand opening. Rather than finding a charity that's, you know, a larger charity, we like to find a local family that's in need, and we will raise money for that family prior to our grand opening. Most recently, we opened a site in Elk Grove, and were able to raise over seven thousand dollars for a lady there that had leukemia. So that's the type of grand opening charities that we like to do. Lastly, you know, I'd like to thank you all for the time. As I said, we know this was coming here with the recommendation of denial, but based on our meetings and all the research that we did, we wanted to still bring it forward. And I'm asking very specifically three items. To please direct staff to provide a report based on objective land use considerations. It's relative to the zoning code and recommending approval of our project. I'd like also that the city be consistent with the application of the municipal code and approval of projects like ours, similar to Safeway, Popeyes, and Walgreens. And then just consider our value and our history in City of Rancho Cordova. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Council members, any questions right now? Okay, well, we will come back with that, and right now, I'm going to open up for a public comment. City clerk said we have some cards.
We have seven speaker cards. The first speaker is Travis Kimball. Each speaker will have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Travis Kimball. Moved to Rancho Cordova in two thousand and five as a founding partner of Quick Quack Car Wash. Moved to Rancho Cordova in 2005 as a founding partner of Quick Quack Car Wash. We started with a few locations here in Sacramento, and we've grown to having locations now in five states with over 75 locations. As Afrae mentioned, we are very, do a lot of research about the kind of sites and the, and where a location should work, would work, and we, it allows us to do a tremendous amount of good in the community. Personally, as a resident, and the success of our, our location here in Rancho Cordova and other locations, it's enabled me to, to personally get involved in the community, obviously. I have five children that go to schools, have gone to school in, in Rancho Cordova elementary schools that we've also sponsored and, and participated in over the years. Sunrise and also McGarvey Elementary School. And we, and also has enabled me to get involved in, in organizations such as the HART Home Assistance and Resource Team, and wanted to take just a quick second to thank the city, the staff, the city, the council members, and especially Councilmember Gatewood for his support in both HART and, and the Interfaith Council, of which I'm also a member. Just wanted to, to, to just have you consider the history of Quick Quack Car Wash as a, as a participating community member. We recently have kind of reveled in the recognition that we've received as kind of the In-N-Out or the Chick-fil-A of car washes, because we try to do things differently. We're recognized, we have team members that are attractive bowtie-type wearing team members that our, our values are based on clean sites, clean team members, and an overall clean appearance for the, for the community. But above that, our, our, our vision as a company is more than just keeping cars clean, it's changing lives, and that's, that's literally our vision statement, is that we change lives for the better. And that involves more than just our team members, but it extends into our community. We are a real community partner, and having additional locations, ones that make sense, which this one, in my opinion, makes sense, allows us to do at a greater scale. So I thank you very much and, and plead for your consideration.
Thank you.
Matthew Anderson.
Hi, Mayor, City Council Members. My name's Matthew Anderson. I've been a resident of Rancho Cordova since 2006. I'm also a small business owner here in the city and have been a member of the Chamber of Commerce since 2011. I come and speak in support of Quick Quack Car Wash and their proposal to build in Zinfandel and Folsom Boulevard. And I just want to speak a little bit about my experience with them as a member of their car wash, and also as a, a company that supplies Quick Quack Car Wash and have so for over a decade. First, as a, as a vendor, Quick Quack has supported the local community and continues to do so even as they grow outside of the state, and for that reason, it continues to help our business and others in the area grow and prosper. Also, you know, on a more micro level, I know they spoke about some of the charity events that they do. My kids attend the Robert J. McGarvey Elementary School, and you will notice that they're constantly sponsoring events at the school there in Sunrise Elementary, and I know that they are very proud to do that in every community that they, that they build their car washes. Also, I wanted to touch base on just them as a business that I like to attend. I go to the Sunrise Quick Quack Car Wash. You guys are probably all very familiar with that. It's a very popular business, especially on Saturday mornings, and I will appreciate having another option closer to my place of business to go and, and wash my car. So my hope is that you guys consider approving the site, because as Councilmember Gatewood mentioned, that particular area has laid vacant for a very long time. It is an eyesore, it will continue to be an eyesore for the future, and so we hope as a community to, to build a prospering business, one that gives back to the community like Quick Quack Car Wash does. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew?
Next is Clint Holstein.
Oh, thank you.
Holton.
Thanks. Hi, I'm Clint Holton. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am the Planning Manager with the Sacramento Area Council of Governments with SACOG. We are here to support staff's recommendation for the denial of the, the permit, primarily because these are really difficult decisions, and I fully recognize that, but these sites, these sites that are within a quarter mile of light rail, a multi-hundred million dollar investment in asset that we have in our region are very rare throughout the region. They're unique, they're, they represent a very unique opportunity for, for implementing our TOD vision. We're in the midst right now of updating our 20-year transportation plan, which is built and nested in, in local plans like the, the Folsom Boulevard specific plan, like your corridor plans. And the, the region as a whole succeeds because of this really excellent planning at the, at the city and county level, and so definite kudos to your staff on, on that, on those plans and all of this work. Our, our 20-year plan is really attempting to, to accomplish a number of goals, from improving the region's economy, providing housing and travel choices for people, cleaning our air, meeting state mandated greenhouse gas reduction targets, making us more competitive for federal and state grants. Our light rail system is critical, our transit system as a whole is critical to those efforts. Sites like this that can support walking and biking to a transit site, to a light rail site, especially on the Gold Line, one of, one of the more popular, popular routes, light rail routes in the region, is really critical to furthering those goals. If we want to be competitive at this, at the federal level in particular, for funds to come and, and pay for additional transit, we've got to really prioritize the transit-oriented development type uses around these stations. More and more at the federal level in particular, the, the funding is kind of, is going away. You have to be really, really competitive, you have to have a compelling story, you have to have taken local actions that support those types of uses if you're going to be successful at that level. So to, to help us as a region succeed and attract talent that is wanting to come to a place where they can ride transit to get where they're going, where they can walk and bike to get where they're going, we really need to be able to, to capitalize on these few sites that we have around light rail stations throughout the region. So that's all I have right now. We're, we're, we're here to support the staff recommendation. I'd be happy to work with staff going forward on, on any of this, of these efforts. We're about to undertake a Transit Oriented Development Action Plan, working with RT, working with the cities that have light rail, to really figure out how, what the sites we have out there and how we can start to get life into them, because these are difficult sites, a lot of these are infill sites, they're very difficult to develop, particularly with the types of uses that we're looking for around transit stations. We're looking to see if we can find solutions-
Please wrap up your comments.
... and funding for that reason. So thank you for your consideration.
Clint, I have, I have a question for, for him. When I was Chair of the Regional Transit Board 10 years ago, thereabouts, Beverly Scott was our Executive Director, and she came to me with, basically it was a warning. It said that the Federal Transit Agency had evaluated particularly the Gold Line as we were seeking additional funding to run additional trains on the Gold Line, and said, basically, we were failing a test at FTA that talked about what sort of development, transit-supportive development do you have along the Gold Line? And the challenge, of course, is that the Gold Line went down an old freight corridor, right, alongside Folsom Boulevard, so you can buy plywood, you can buy drywall, you can rent a U-Haul, all these things that aren't transit-supportive. Those are the uses that were naturally along that freight corridor. And, and she was saying, you know, we're, we're in real jeopardy here, depending on how they apply this rule. Is that still the case, to your knowledge, for RT and the-
I don't know about a specific rule, but I do think that is still the case. I think it is definitely the case that when we're going after grants from the Federal Transit Administration, they're looking to see what is planned around an area, what is being built around an area, what exists around, around a light rail line or light rail station. They're looking at that, they're looking at the potential of that area to generate transit trips, and not just transit trips that are park-and-ride, get on and commute in the morning, commute home in the evening, but transit rides all day. They're looking for ridership potential, and that is what's going to make us competitive for those funds. So I think that is definitely still a, a true statement today.
Okay, thank you. And Lynda, you might, you might have something to add on that later, I'm not sure.
Next speaker is Jaime Lemos.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmember. My name is Jaime Lemos, I'm with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, and I oversee the, the Transportation and Climate Change Division. Just a little more to echo on my colleague from SACOG. As you know, this site is within quarter miles of two light rail stations, so it has a potential to discourage transit use, which affects the Sacramento's region ability to meet plans to implement federal and state air quality requirements. We support staff's recommendation and strongly encourage the city to work with the Quick Quack Car Wash applicant to find an alternative location. So providing transit-oriented development, or TOD, near light rail stations reduces automobile use and associated emissions, and is essential to meeting the air quality and greenhouse gas reduction goals of the Sacramento Region's Metropolitan Transportation Plan and Sustainable Communities Strategy, which is a basis of the Sacramento Air Quality Management District's State Implementation Plan for meeting federal and state air quality and greenhouse gas reduction requirements. So that was a mouthful. Let me break that down a little bit further. As we begin to develop more growth within our region, the emissions forecasted in the development impact the MTP and SES. The forecasted emissions impact the Sacramento Air Quality Management District SIP model, which is based on air quality standards, and basically then puts Sacramento in either attainment or non-attainment in air quality and emissions. As you know, or as you may know, currently, right now, we're not in attainment for ozone and PM. So the further that we get outside of attainment, then that means twofold. One, the air district may have to implement rules and regulations that strict permitted businesses to emit less air emissions, which means tighter standards, maybe higher fees for, for emission pollution. The other thing it does, it also limits the amount of incentives that could come to our region. It was also mentioned earlier, my colleague from SACOG, on how it can impact transportation funds, but then also for incentive funds for innovative mobile technology, there also is a great impact, where Sacramento could be a, not a, not a great as a competitor for these type of incentive funds. The Sacramento Region is already struggling to meet vehicle miles traveled reduction targets developed for its SES here by the Air Resources Board, and the proposed project exacerbates this problem with its strong potential-
Please wrap up your comments.
... to transit, to discourage transit use. The region has spent millions of dollars on its light rail systems to support the air quality and many other benefits. So finally, because it affects the Sacramento Region's ability to meet plans to implement federal and state air quality requirements, the proposed use does not support public health planning. The Sacramento Region's SIP is required because we don't meet federal and state standards for ozone and PM, which impact public health outcomes. So due to poor air quality, the Sacramento Region has some of the highest rates of asthma and respiratory illnesses in the nation, and the proposed project does not support planning for a healthier region. Thank you.
I have a question. I was on the Air Quality Board, I'm still an alternate right now, but it took the federal government about three years, oh, about 10 years ago, to admit that some of the problems we have are from the forest fires. And this year, last year, it was disastrous for like, my first thought was paradise, but we had to cancel our, some of our, some of our celebration things because of the air quality and the smoke in the air and like that, and I think that, isn't that part of what we're talking about on this for air quality? I mean, and do they count that still, or is it just cars only?
No, it does count, but that would be more of an air quality, air monitoring section question, but there are potential for exceptional events that we have within our region, which are like a, like a wildfire, that can impact our air quality or our SIP. And so those type of exceptional events are taken into consideration, but as we move forward, we know that wildfires are more of the norm now, right? And so the air quality is impacted by the wildfires here. Here in the Sacramento Region, most of our air emissions are vehicle-related. So we know that now, as we move forward into our future, it'll be the, the vehicle emissions that are exacerbating the air quality here in Sacramento Region, some of the permitted sources or stationary resources that are also here within our region, and then also now the wildfires. So it's going to be a medley now.
All righty, thank you.
Next speaker is James Boyle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is James Boyle, I'm the, the Planning Director at Sacramento Regional Transit, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of staff's recommendation for this particular project. And I want to be brief, but I just want to hit on a few things. I think it's important that as you consider this type of project and development along Folsom Boulevard, to think about all the things that have taken place in the past several years. The region, the community, has invested hundreds of millions of dollars into a light rail system with numerous stops in Rancho Cordova, and two, the, the two that are mentioned here, Cordova Town Center and Zinfandel, act as sort of your main street, your walk-up light rail stations. So they, those stations are supported by intense development around stations, residential, commercial, activities where people can walk and bike and feel safe to access transit. So I think it's important to remember the investment that you have made and the community has made on, in the corridor. And specifically, you look at developments like the Walgreens, it's built in such a way so that it tends to be more pedestrian friendly, it fronts the street, it's built up to the street. So you're already putting things in place to encourage, as Councilmember Bud was talking about, a main street, creating this main street for a walkable, transit-friendly environment. So RT has been making a lot of improvements and investments in light rail. We're working on double tracking to Folsom to add 15-minute service that will go all the way from historic Folsom to SAC Valley Station, so that would give Rancho Cordova that direct 15-minute service to Folsom and vice versa. We're working on modernizing the system by buying all-new light rail cars, by upgrading our stations. So RT is putting a lot of investments into its light rail system, and we do this so that we can continue to build ridership and attract new riders to the system. And we cannot do that without having land uses that support transit development. For buses, for light rail, it's important that we have land uses there that support those transit investments. So I just, I want to just encourage you to think about the past, to think about the things you've done to improve things on Folsom Boulevard. I drive through there quite often, and you know, you got great streetscaping and, and nice pedestrian environment, but we need to work on the land use, and I know you're trying to do that, and I, I know it gets frustrating when you see parcels sit vacant for years and nothing happens, but I think you can be bold, and you can say, we want something better, and we want to create a vibrant sort of community main street feel and encourage folks to ride transit. So that's it for my comments. I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Chris Holm.
Thank you, Member, Council Members. My name is Chris Holm, I'm with Walk Sacramento, a small local nonprofit dedicated to improving public health and economic development, and we do this a lot by working with land use and transportation planners, community organizations. And the rest of it escapes my mind right now. Usually, I speak pretty extemporaneously, but tonight I'm going to do something pretty scripted for a change. And I'm also going to talk about something else than usual. The two letters that are in the attachment describe the built environment factors that we see that are not going to support public health or economic development in Rancho Cordova. And what I want to talk about is noise. The general plan noise element starts out with the introduction, "Noise is an unwanted sound that interferes with an ability to perform a task or enjoy in an activity. The city will remove major sources of noise when possible and impact or mitigate all other noise-producing activities." And then from the noise ordinance, there's sentences such as, "Excessive, unnecessary, or offensive noise within the city is detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, peace and quiet of the inhabitants of the city, and is therefore declared a public nuisance. And every person in the city is entitled to live in an environment free from those noises. Further, it's declared to be policy to contain sound level in the city of Rancho Cordova at their present levels with the ultimate goal of reducing such levels, when and where feasible and without causing undue burdens to meet the noise standards set forth in the chapter. And it's unlawful for any person to willfully make or continue to cause to be made or continued any loud, unnecessary, or unusual noise which disturbs the peace and quiet of any neighborhood or which causes discomfort or annoyance." What is meant by neighborhood, or in the area? What do you think a neighborhood is? The municipal code doesn't define what a neighborhood is. I like the explanation that I found in a ULI paper called "Finding Place in Making Connections Communities," which in part reads, "It is the general area around your house where you might perform routine tasks such as shopping, going to the park, or visiting with your neighbors." I imagine most people living north of Folsom Boulevard would consider the properties on the north side of Folsom Boulevard to be part of their neighborhood. This project is constructing, proposing to construct eight- and nine-foot sound walls to mitigate the noise in the yards of the adjacent houses, yet the noise levels on the public sidewalk along Folsom Boulevard will be much greater. This project may not violate the standards, but I strongly believe the project as proposed will disturb the peace and quiet of the neighborhood."
Please wrap up your comments.
It's not only inconsistent with the general plan, the Folsom Boulevard specific plan, and the TOD overlay zoning, but it will diminish the walkability that is so necessary to make cities livable, successful, and sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker card for this item is Diane Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We are very proud to call QuickQuack a very strong and engaged chamber member. In fact, we recognize QuickQuack as our 2015 Small Business of the Year, as part of our Best in Business Awards. We do that based on not only the solid business practice that they have, but their engagement with our community. We find them to be very community-oriented, they're locally engaged, I know that they hire local youth, which is very important to us. In fact, this particular location would be ideally located to students at Cordova High School, at Kenny High School, and several other of those locations. And the light rail stops themselves also provide an ideal way to bring in employees that can be able to work. In fact, that's one of the reasons that they've changed the light rail timing of things up in Folsom, because frankly, people were unable to stay there and work, they had to be able to drive their vehicles there. So it actually met a need that was being challenged. We find them to be very strategic and very well-managed local business. We find that their approach is deliberate and sound, and we encourage and we believe in great confidence in the business plans that they have proposed. This is not something that they just go about lightly. They think very clearly and do a good deal of research to find that this is going to be a solid location and a good one for their business model. I urge you to give consideration to their request, and we hope that we'll be able to include and keep this business local here, right here in Rancho Cordova, and the support that they already do give us. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
I have no more speaker cards on this. Okay.
I'm just going to talk off the top for a second because you sit and you listen to this stuff.
Thank you.
I'm Greg Bohr, you guys know me.
Yeah, we're going to talk about stuff, so let's go here.
How we doing tonight, everybody? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. And got several thoughts running through my mind, and I'm trying to put them together. But as I listen to this, a rare piece of ground that sat vacant for 10 years, that's oxymoronic in my mind. I think of the fact that emissions are emissions from gas autos, which we're replacing with electric as time goes on. And in the meantime, most of us have to drive our cars further out Sunrise to get them washed at QuickQuack, as opposed to just being on the road a lot less right there in the neighborhood. As far as the noise is concerned, it's kind of interesting to me, when kind of the white noise and things die down from where I live, all the way at the end of Zinfandel, then I begin to hear the light rail, bing, 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 late at night and early in the morning. And so I don't know that you can really make, you know, cover all the bases or make anybody happy, but I personally am in support of this business because I see the way their other operations run. I think the man made an excellent presentation, and they would have an investment here in Sacramento, in Rancho Cordova, that I don't know, other than residents and business owners here would have a similar investment. So I am in support of the QuickQuack. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a speaker card for Lynette, but I don't know what item you want to speak to. Is it this one? Okay, Lynette, Logan, can you come forward?
Thank you. I just want to say you guys put my grandson to sleep, but thanks anyways. I happen to own a residence on Alicante that would actually back-to-back with Quacky Wash. And I'm very concerned that the noise would be indeed a problem when you're sitting out there barbecuing or having family events. Those vacuums are super loud. I love Quacky Wash, I love the idea of the look of it. The lot's been vacant, there's transients that sleep out there, we have tons of problems with it, it does need to be developed. But I just want to make sure that we're very clear that I think it's going to be a noise issue for the residents on the other side. And with that said, Alicante is a very unserved street, there's no sidewalks, there's gutters that are, will take out a small vehicle if you're not careful when you drive into your driveway. So then to have our home with a seven-foot prison wall behind it and no facial street sidewalks to kind of combat the ugliness of that, I think would be a deterrent in property value. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards I have. Anyone else?
Okay, do we have any others in the audience who wish to speak on this item? Okay, saying none, then, I'll close the public comment and go to the council.
I have a question for staff. Darcy, am I correct in thinking that it's QuickQuack that's building another car wash on Zinfandel at River Plaza?
That's correct, at the River Gate Plaza. That was approved a few months back.
Right. So this would be the third one in their location, in Rancho Cordova, and they already have the one on Zinfandel, which is available to people who live in this, well, it'll be another one on Zinfandel, available to people in this area.
Correct.
Thank you.
So, I have a couple of comments. So first, Lynda, you just referenced it, but I was under the impression that the compromise was the alternative location on Sunrise and Zinfandel. So I'm really surprised that this is back in front of us. And I don't make a habit of opposing businesses that propose to build and spend money in my city. But this is a unique situation. I wasn't on council when Walgreens was designed and approved. I don't think it's a good pedestrian use, they should not have put the parking up on the corner, the building should have been on the corner with the parking behind it to make it look more pedestrian-friendly and more urbanized. I've only heard the debates about it, and turning away that building was not something that everyone was willing to do under the circumstances that we have. But a drive-through at a pharmacy so that seniors and mothers with children in the car don't have to get out of the car in order to get their medicine is a far cry from what we're talking about. I will say, there are three cars at my home, all of them are signed up for QuickQuack. Sometimes, because beyond the fact that I go down Sunrise to get to work, my office in Roseville is across the street from yours, from your location on Douglas, I sometimes wash my car twice a day. So, love your service, I would love to have more of them. And I really, from a business model, I really don't understand why you'd want a location here when you have two that are going to be on Sunrise, and why you wouldn't be looking for something out on Bradshaw, or somewhere further to the west. And again, I was under the impression that the location at River Gate Plaza was the alternative to this location. You know, and Garrett, I've sat here and said almost exactly what you just said, which is, isn't something there better than nothing? And those are arguments that were made against BDX and the Spanos Development in Capitol Village, that just leave it here until we get a Trader Joe's or we get other things. The reality was that was never going to come because of the retailers that were near it, that the alternative that those residents wanted didn't exist. The alternative to this site is mixed-use housing, high-density uses next to light rail stations and transit-oriented developments. And so as I evaluated this, again, I'm a little disappointed that the applicant spent the time and the effort to come here, because it wasn't going to change my opinion, unfortunately. And again, I would love to see you have two or three more locations in the city, I just don't think it's appropriate to have it here. A lot of the other references for the larger shopping centers where we put Popeyes and other things, those parking lots already exist, the infrastructure was already there, people were already going there. This is a vacant lot that gives us an opportunity to build anything on it. And unfortunately, it's just not the kind of use that I'm comfortable with. I agree with the staff's recommendation. I don't like making a habit of turning things down in public like this. But again, I would encourage you, find other places. If you went over to where Food Source is on Bradshaw, even across the street, which wouldn't be in the city, but where the Ralphs used to be and where the Burger King is, those seem like obvious places to put it. If you could, you know, find additional places in those areas where there's already heavy parking, that that can come out and put something like this in, that makes total sense. To be honest with you, the River Gate one was a stretch for me because it's right at the pinch point of Zinfandel, going down from two lanes down to one and putting that many more cars. But I went with you because it's already in a place where there's tons of cars going there already. That's not what we want for this intersection. It's probably, and the gentleman from RT may be able to tell us better, you know, we're probably 10 or 15 years away from getting the bridge for RT to go over Zinfandel like we have at Watt and we have at Sunrise. And until we have that, adding more cars to that intersection would be a nightmare. So again, adding this business right there is actually going to compound the problem that we have at that intersection. So again, for all those reasons, I just, I can't support it, and I have to agree with the staff. But again, I think there's a lot of great alternatives that I think Amanda and Micah and everybody else could probably encourage you to find. But that's how I feel about this. So...
So I want to agree with Donald, and absolute, everything that Diane and everyone has said, in fact, about QuickQuack is absolutely accurate. They are a quality business, we appreciate the fact that it's homegrown in the region. We've heard a lot about the regional impacts of approving something like this on Folsom Boulevard. And, you know, that's, there's no question that we need to remember those regional impacts. But when you go back to the very beginning of Darcy's presentation, and you look at the eight or nine or 10 different goals that this city has adopted and had in place for a very long time, and the fact that the putting completely auto-centric use in a vacant lot like this, whereas Donald points out, it's not replacing existing parking or something that's there already, this is a virgin piece of ground, it just makes no sense whatsoever. I personally am not willing to give up on the goals that we have for Folsom Boulevard or for our transit-oriented development areas, especially at this point in time when both Secog and Regional Transit are working on additional planning that would hopefully support those of us who have been trying to do this. Those of us who have urban boulevards that used to be a highway and are still in the process of transitioning have needed the kind of help that Secog and RT are providing, and we've needed it for a long time. And now that that's coming forth, it is not time to give up on our goals. It just, it makes no sense. And I have a complete sympathy for Ms. Logan, who lives on Alicante. I'm not a fan of sound walls, period, but the concept of having a seven or eight-foot masonry wall as my backyard with, and if you consider where that it is on the south side of her property, and the fact that her house is on the north side, it would completely eliminate whatever sunlight she's got coming into the backyard in the late, in the afternoon. You know, it would be a complete barrier to her light, to the light in her backyard. And car washes do, car washes are noisy, and she's absolutely right, so.
Donald, you had another point?
I just had to clarify a question that the applicant brought up. They, I think he said it this way, that property owners can elect to have the TOD overlay or not? Can you explain what he might be saying and what our interpretation, or what your interpretation is?
Sure. So there is language in the Folsom Boulevard specific plan that does state that a property owner can elect to take on the TOD overlay. However, the general plan does have policies and goals that, for lack of a better word, pretty much trump that statement. So because it is in a TOD overlay within a quarter mile, the general plan policies would override that statement that's in the Folsom Boulevard specific plan.
Do you agree with what she just said?
Yeah, on the pyramid of entitlements, it trumps it.
Okay. Because I ain't a lawyer and I ain't a planner, so you both two agree. Okay, thank you.
So first off, I don't believe that this development would bring asthma to my community, make it less livable or less sustainable. So that's first off. I appreciate your business coming into Rancho, and I appreciate you trying to build in my city. I think something that stayed fallow for 10 to 15 years is a terrible idea. I think it causes other issues that come along, probably, and I believe there's a lot of noise on that because that happens to be right next to light rail. So, and that's one of those things. I think that if we can get anyone to build into this foul land on that area would be great. Now, Rancho Cordova, everyone keeps saying these terms, like, we want a business there, we want to build there, but no one tells me how they're going to get the money or what business is planning to buy that land out and build there. I, however, own a business and understand what that would take, and no one's going to buy that land and build there in the next 10 to 15 years, no one. You know, that land is weird, it's off-putting, it's got this weird angle, and I don't even know how you guys would want to put in there, but it'd be hard to drag a business in there even if they had benefits. And they're telling me they're getting ready to put another plan together, and that's great, but it doesn't fix the problem with having a piece of land in the middle of our city, which we're trying to fill up on Folsom Boulevard, make nice. Now, if we could get some type of housing there, that'd be great, but that won't be coming. That won't be coming for 10 to 15 years, even if we're able to get a grant. We still don't build housing in the city of Rancho Cordova, we'd have to get a developer to do it, and there's no one that's interested in building on that piece of land for at least the last 10 years. So I, however, support you guys putting a business there, taking up that land, taking care of our homeless situation and problems that we have on that land and taking care of it. I want the community, and I want them also, you know, the sound wall, I want you to meet with that constituent right there because her land happens to butt up against it and take care of her fears of making it loud, noisy, and obnoxious, but I don't hear that. I have a car wash across probably, you know, within listening distance of our house, and I don't hear it. And so I don't really see the issue of it, so it's not like it's a NIMBY issue that I wouldn't want in my backyard, because I have one. It brings in business, it takes care of the community, and I don't want more people driving all the way out to the other car washes when they could just come right out the door. So I do feel the pain that they're seeing, but I also understand the realism of trying to build a business into an area, especially next to a Walmart, a Walgreens, a very interesting part of our city. And I think this would just make it look cleaner, nicer, and a better appeal. And I think this would just make it look cleaner, nicer, and a better appeal on Folsom Boulevard. That's my feeling.
Well, I want to thank you guys for a really great presentation and a really great effort here. Mr. Kimball, I really appreciate having the founder, or a founding partner, you know, of a company here in Rancho Cordova in the room. This is a beautiful project, and you guys have been a great business in the community. You're a partner with us in many ways that you elucidated there at the dais, with the Cordova Community Council, with the Chamber, with local employment, with fundraising for nonprofits. These are all great things. And I never really want to be in the business of saying no to an investment on Folsom Boulevard because I recognize the value of what you're talking about. I recognize the risk you're willing to take, betting on us as a city. And I agree that you are changing lives for the better. That's an awesome, awesome mission to have in your business. And I think you are successful in that. The hard part is the location. If it was anywhere other than this location, this is an easy yes. But when it's this close to transit, particularly between two stations, then all these other factors come into play that are up against all the things I just said about welcoming a great business and what a great partner you have been and how much we value investment in Rancho Cordova. So I've got away hundreds of millions of dollars invested in transit and tens of millions of dollars invested by the city in Folsom Boulevard. And the potential of what could happen along Folsom Boulevard, as outlined in our general plan and is studied now by SECOG, NRT, and the Air Quality District, and this coming force from the state that is desperately trying to find ways to enhance infill development all over California, but particularly on old commercial corridors like Folsom Boulevard. So we're seeing at SECOG grant programs that are more and more designed for this situation as opposed to more traditional highway kind of funding projects. So, you know, in weighing all of that, I think I've got to say this is not the right spot for this business. I would very much like you, though, to consider other spots further to the west, perhaps, off of Folsom Boulevard, probably ideally, unless there's a particularly large gap somewhere that makes it sort of unwalkable between stations. But this is a really tough call. I feel like I'm in a no-win situation. You know, either don't get the investment, don't get the business, or it's just not a winning situation for me really either way. But in this particular case, I'm going to have to come down on the side of this is probably not the best spot for this location. And we need to, we need to hold this spot between two light rail stations for something that's truly dense and transit-supportive.
All right. Well, unfortunately, I have to agree with David and Donald and Linda. And I wish we had, maybe you can work with staff and find a place because I would love to have another Quick Quack even on Folsom Boulevard, if there's a good place for it. There are some spots I know along light rail that there are no stations, if there's a place to work with that. It would be the best, because I like using Quick Quack like everybody else. I mean, that's the way it is. But right now, I think that one location that we're talking about is not going to work. I wish we were doing right now, I really wish we were going over Zinfandel rather than having to fight more traffic on it. But I think that's what it would be. So, right now, unless there's something else on the public, I'm going to close with a public comment and ask if we have a motion.
So I will move that we find the environmental documentation adequate and appropriate and that we adopt the resolution for the denial of the conditional use permit and the minor design review.
Second.
Okay. Now I want to ask a question. What if, is there a possibility of the applicant asking that we continue this particular project, pick it up and put it in a location somewhere else?
Certainly, you can continue the item off calendar, and then we can work with them to locate a new location. And then they would have to revise all of their application material for that.
Can I ask a question?
Good.
Since I just seconded that. What, the virtue in that would be that they wouldn't have to, they wouldn't have a denial? So then they wouldn't have to go through an appeals process if they chose to take this planning document they have and find a different location?
So there wouldn't be an actual appeal process. You're the final authority for that. So the plus is they don't, they don't get a denial. Everything just gets transferred to a new location and we start over.
See, my theory, because we've used this in the past, instead of just denying something, asked if there were opportunities for them, if they would like the application continued so that we could preserve the expenditure they've made, what they've applied for. It's really, as several of us have said, you know, take this up, stick it someplace else, and you have a much, a much better chance. So I just wanted to ask that question. But if nobody wants to take me up on that, then we have a motion and a second to deny.
Five-minute recess to discuss?
No.
Yes. Glad to hear from you again.
I think we would be open to continuance. We have been doing a lot of due diligence and research in the area. That is why we're here tonight, because that's the spot for us, based on our due diligence and research. But I'm open to continuance, and we can take another look at it. Happy to do that.
Okay. So I will, I will withdraw my motion and change it to a motion that we...
I will withdraw my second, which you need.
Thank you. Which, to a motion in which...
Before you do that, could I make one request?
Sure.
We have, at the request of Vice Mayor, we actually did reach out to SECOG and met with them because he, it was a great suggestion.
Right.
Go meet with those folks and see where we can work together.
Right.
We did receive zero participation from SECOG.
Oh, that's too bad. We're sorry.
We did meet, we did meet with RT.
Yeah.
RT, I thought we had a better meeting with RT previously.
Sure.
I'd really like to get together with those folks and work together with those guys as well.
I suspect David would be happy to help you.
Yeah, and I can't emphasize enough, working with our deputy city manager and our economic development manager, who's got the red sweater over there, that knows where every piece of available land or anybody thinking to sell anything, she seems to be the person that knows.
Absolutely. We're in the business of development, at least I am. I don't wash cars. I develop land.
Sure.
But I do it for the company.
I get it.
But I'm totally happy to have discussions with anybody to see if there's a better location for this site.
Okay, then I'm happy to move that we continue this off calendar and give the applicant whatever time he needs to find a different location.
And I'll second. And again, I just want to caveat, because you brought it up. You know, I didn't base my decision, I was chair of the air district for the last two years up until this year. I didn't base my decision based off of the fact that there, I mean, it doesn't fit into their planning documents and a lot of other things too. And I appreciate that they were here to give feedback. They're not the ones that I'm looking for direction on how I was voting on this stuff. It really comes down to knowing my city and knowing where the oversaturation of these types of uses are. And again, to David's point, you guys are a great business. You're a great partner. We want to see you grow. It's just, this is a very unique situation in this one place. I don't anticipate that in very many places in the city.
I understand that.
That you would have that. And again, I apologize that you've gone 13 months trying to work on this project and that it had to come to this. But hopefully, we can find you two or three more locations if that's what you're looking for.
Well, and...
Because I want them because I get my car washed a lot.
If you really want to be, if you really want to be the McDonald's of car washes, okay. Or the Subway of car washes, or the Starbucks of car washes, okay. But this is a little close.
Yeah.
So I understand that. And I mean, there was value in us coming here tonight. We knew that it was up for a denial. We knew the same four folks that continually follow us and oppose us would be here tonight. I would like to work with them rather than against them.
Sure.
Super. Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
So your motion is to do a continuance?
To continue it off calendar, I think was the phrase Darcy used, and allow them to work with staff to secure a different location.
And you second?
Assuming off calendar means a date to be determined, right?
Yes.
It's date uncertain.
Just sort of suspend their application.
Well, we continue the application again.
Yeah.
To me, those mean two different things. But yeah, I'll second.
All right. And on this thing, I will ask for a phone roll call.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Sorry, guys. Aye.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and effort, and everybody else's too. Going on to item number 12, I ask your city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Approval of Mobility Master Plan that will update the 2006 Transit Master Plan.
Good evening, Mayor McGarvey and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And earlier today, we were talking about an autonomous shuttle. And so this will be another conversation talking about the future of transportation in the city of Rancho Cordova. And to give us a more thorough introduction, I'd like to introduce Mark Thomas with the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Albert. Hello, Mayor and council members. Mark Thomas with Public Works. We're excited to bring the Mobility Master Plan to you tonight. It is an update of our Transit Master Plan from 2006, which was a highly renowned document. These documents provide high-level policy and direction for transportation and are intended as an appendix to the general plan. So we, a couple of things. We had a workshop with you in April of 2018 and just to kick off this master plan. And got some direction from you. And we are now bringing you the final document for your approval. And in order to share that with you, we've brought Tim Hayne, who is with Nelson Nygaard. They are a consultant that has been with us since the beginning of the Cordovan in 2009. They've been helping us with both planning and implementation projects for transit, the Cordovan and many other things. So Tim is a national expert on transit. And I just found out international, has done some work in Canada and South America. And he will be providing you a short presentation, and then we will ask for your approval of the Mobility Master Plan. Tim?
Mayor McGarvey and members of the council, thank you for hearing us this evening. Albert and Mark, thank you very much for the introduction. I'm a transit expert, but I'm not really good with technology. So I'm not sure what I punch to advance my slides, but assuming it's this little toggle switch right here, so if you'll bear with me. The plan itself is over 60-some pages long. So we've really had to condense things down. You have it. Uh-huh. Very good. We've really had to condense things down to present this to you. There's a lot more depth in the document itself. We've made it very reader-friendly. When we started out, we had the idea that maybe it might even be a coffee table book. I think that some of the discussions that you've had this evening with respect to land use and transit-oriented development, even the trial of the OLLI, all represent foreshadowing of the future. And this Mobility Master Plan is really intended to help guide the city through decisions over the next probably decade or so. I wish I could tell you that I knew everything that is going to happen in transportation in the next decade. But I have to tell you, in my 40-plus years in transportation, this is probably one of the most exciting 10 years that I've ever had with respect to seeing how things, how quickly things are emerging and new ideas and new things that not only transit agencies but communities can do. So how we framed this plan was really around mobility themes, centralized concepts that will hold over time regardless of what happens in the future. And we'll talk a little bit about how this interacts with the future in a second. In each theme, then, we have specific strategies. We're going to give you some examples of those strategies. The one thing I will say is that many strategies overlap the mobility themes that we've established. But for the sake of not being repetitive, we've only chosen one theme that they best fit under and left them there. But the first theme is safety. This is a general goal for the entire city of Rancho Cordova in general and really crosses all of the themes together. Whatever happens with respect to mobility, one of the most important aspects is that is a safe thing for our citizens, whether they are walking the dog, whether they're walking to work, whether they're driving a car to work, whether they're riding a bicycle, whether they're in an OLLI, whatever it happens to be, safety and integrating safety with all mobility options is a really important consideration for this plan. But it's also important that things be coordinated. One of the, I think, one of the most difficult situations we're facing these days is we have many different transportation options that are not particularly well-coordinated. We're starting to see, in European communities in particular, a great deal more coordination between all various modes so that people don't have to decide, this is the one mode I'm going to use. They have the freedom to choose various modes because they are coordinated and move on. Responsive. I think you heard a really interesting discussion this evening about transit-oriented development in a very, very specific application. The idea of this, of this plan, though, is that the land uses continue to evolve and that the transportation system is responsive to those land use options and that it meets the socioeconomic needs and goals of the city of Rancho Cordova. Efficiency is always important. Money does not grow on trees. So one of the things that the city needs to be able to do is to continue to look at what our options are for doing things in the most efficient way possible. And then finally, a word that I remember very well from the study session was flexibility. We must have flexibility in our plan to address new mobility technology, new things that we don't even know are coming yet. Which brings us to how we've sort of adapted this to an unknown future. One of the things that we've done is look at strategies that fall into various scenarios, planning scenarios. And some of these scenarios may be more true at one time than others. Some may become true faster than others. But the first scenario is just traditional transportation. So the thing that we've all known for the last 30 years that's starting to change. The second scenario are new mobility services. So these are things like the Smart Ride that is, that RT has been implementing in many areas of the greater Sacramento region, as for instance. Electric scooters is another example of a new mobility service that has hit the market, that you're probably going to be faced with a decision on what you're going to do in Rancho Cordova with that. The third scenario are future technologies. So the OLLI is a great example of that, sort of the leading edge of new technology. We don't know exactly where it's going to go. We don't know exactly what applications it's going to have in our community. But it's something we want to be ready to embrace. So these mobility themes cross across all the scenarios. And the job of the staff and the city council, as time goes on, is to pick which strategies fit which scenario at any given time over the life of this plan, which is intended to be approximately 10 years. So just a little bit, I don't want to spend a lot of time on the strategies, but just hit a few of the strategies in the safe theme. Being able to invest money in enhancing bus stop locations, making them safer, as well as providing safer connected bike and pedestrian infrastructure. Was interesting to me, we heard a city street that is one block off of Folsom Boulevard that has no sidewalks, for instance. And I'm not saying that you should go run out and put sidewalks there. I'm just saying that's a good example of the importance of connected pedestrian infrastructure with the rest of the city and really fits that safety theme and fits all the scenarios. Coordinated is really important. And there are various scenarios, various strategies that go with scenario one. One of those is exploring pilot projects. And what pilot projects do is inform... And what pilot projects do is inform how you may fit in the second scenario of enhanced mobility features that are coming, coming up now, they're becoming more obvious now, or that are a little bit more futuristic, so autonomous vehicles, how do we deal with autonomous vehicles? The advantage of exploring pilot projects like the Ollie here is that it will inform how the city approaches those future scenarios as they become greater, a greater truth, that they become the reality that we're dealing with at the time. Responsive, I think, evolving the land use policies of the city. Rancho Cordova has already done a lot of that, and I can tell you, you will probably continue to do a lot of that. The one point I do want to make about land use is it turns over much slower than our mobility options do. The built environment, I can just about guarantee that most of the buildings in this business park will still be here twenty years from now in their current form. It's very unlikely that a developer will come in and buy up all of this land and redevelop it within that timeframe. So part of it is figuring out, how do we adapt mobility options to the built environment that we already have? And where we've got new parts of the built environment that we want to, that we want to fit into our community, what mobility options best fit that, and what opportunities are there moving ahead? Efficiency, I've said a lot about that already in terms of money doesn't grow on trees. We want to make sure that we're investing the public funds in the most cost-effective manner possible, and that it's leading us where we want to go in terms of the goals of the city. One of the important pieces of that is adopting a strategy risk assessment. And there's a lot of detail on this. There's even a whole nice little graphic that we put into the plan. But this is really, if I could hearken back to the turn of the last century. So this is the businessperson that has been building buggy whips since 1810, and it's now 1905. And they're in New York City, and they're trying to decide, business is booming. My plant is fifty years old. Should I invest in a new plant going ahead, or should I stop? And the risk assessment is really looking at what's going on around you. And a businessperson building buggy whips would have looked at the invention of those four-wheeled contraptions that scare all the horses and would have said, gee, that's a leading edge of something that I'm not sure I can compete with. Maybe I ought to wait for a couple of years and see what happens. If that business owner would have waited until 1913, horses almost disappeared from New York City by 1913 in a course of less than a decade. So that is what a risk assessment does. It makes one stop, look around, take stock of, and ask the question, is this a good investment? Based on what we know today, and given that the life of this investment may be fifty years, is this a good investment for the city to make? And that's really what a strategy risk assessment does. And then finally, flexible, being able to formalize partnerships with emerging mobility partners. Being able to formalize partnerships, again, with transportation management associations like the Route 50 corridor, TMA. Not knowing what the future of that organization is, but continuing to be able to coordinate and work with businesses to understand what the needs of their employees are, coming and going to work, is very, very important for the long-term economic health of Rancho Cordova. So things like convening a transportation technology committee to understand what is coming adds to that flexibility. Implementation is really looking at how are we set organizationally as a city to deal with all of these changes that are coming in our, in our future mobility. Being able to maintain those regional partnerships with SACRT, with Secog, with the Air Quality District, with whomever is necessary to advance the goals of the city. And then lastly, looking for some quick wins, some things that the city can do that are low-hanging fruit that really help advance the idea of improving local mobility. Things like the Ollie demonstration, things like converting perhaps, or adding to the Cordovan with a microtransit demonstration, maybe in conjunction with the RT, that kind of thing. So quick wins that really start advancing the idea of improving local mobility. I talked longer than my allotted seven minutes. I apologize for that. But hopefully, that gives you a little bit of a desire to go read the rest of the document and look at the full document. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Anyone have any questions? I have one. Ollie, okay? And some of the commercials you see on TV of cars, the cars are set up so they stop on their own because they get to a certain distance from the cars ahead, and they start on their own without having to do anything yourself. Is that the same thing that they're doing with the Ollie and some of the other things? And would that be the same thing you were talking about earlier? About twenty-five years would be the same? Or thirty years from now, it'd be the same, or?
There are a lot of futurists that really disagree about how the evolution of autonomous vehicles is going to occur. I think the one thing that we can say for sure is that cars are going to continue to get smarter, and a lot of it has to do with the microability to do very, very rapid calculations and improvement in our sensing capabilities. So the ability to sense a pedestrian who's just getting ready to walk out from behind a truck and stop the vehicle autonomously, those sorts of technologies are continuing to improve. The thing that people disagree on is how that's going to roll out into our transportation environment and what impact it will have. One of the things that we know about cars is that they're not very geometrically efficient. Cars take a lot of space, and whether they're running autonomously or non-autonomously, one of the issues with cars is they still take space for storage. Some people say that there, for every car that's in America, there are seven parking spaces in America. So it says something about, an average parking space is a thousand square feet. So it says something about how efficient the use of an automobile is with respect to land. They're not very land-efficient. So one of the unknowns is how that interaction is going to work between the private automobile and what we call the shared mobility industry, which is perhaps where we'll see autonomous vehicles first. You notice where a lot of the money is coming from is in the rideshare companies are putting a lot of money into autonomous vehicles because they know that's where the profit is. So the ability to get a vehicle that can operate itself, that doesn't have an operator, that doesn't have limitations on how many hours a day it's on the street, that sort of thing, means higher profits for a company like Uber or Lyft or whoever else is on the horizon with respect to autonomous, uh, rideshare companies. So, again, experts disagree about where that's going to be because there's also a bunch of people like me who really like old muscle cars. Well, they're never going to be autonomous. So if I'm driving my '67 Mustang out on the freeway someplace, it's not going to have the ability to communicate with the other automobiles the way an autonomous vehicle will. So are we going to tell all the folks who drive classic cars, you can't drive your car on these streets any longer because it doesn't fit our infrastructure? I don't know where that's going to go. I, you know, this is the United States of America. I strongly doubt that we will take that kind of action. And it will have a lot to do with how that, how that technology rolls out and how it's used and what happens in our highways and streets. So I'll just say that my prediction is that we will see it first in the shared mobility, things like Lyft and Uber becoming autonomous and operating mostly on the streets of our cities, maybe into the suburbs as well, probably not long-distance cross-country yet. We'll also see it in trucking. I think that's another place that's likely to happen. And it could happen in public transit as well. But in terms of, you know, where general owners, like all of us, you know, having three cars, for instance, that are all autonomous, that may be further out there.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Donald.
Well, I would just say first that if
I own three cars, too, by the way.
If you don't think that you could, that you could anonymize a Mustang, a nineteen-sixties Mustang, you don't watch Mythbusters enough because they, they could at least remotely control those suckers. How well it worked, but they were able to, they were able to drive them into walls and other things and jump them off of ramps and stuff. So I've seen those types of things. But no, I totally agree with you. I mean, David, I know you attend a lot of the NLC meetings and conferences, like a lot of us do. But I remember my year as mayor, the US Conference of Mayors in January, I want to say, Bill Ford got up and talked about the fact that they know they're going to make less cars in the future and that the vast majority of them are going to be autonomous. And exclusively within urban areas, they're going, and when I say urban area, and the way he defined it was twenty-five million or more, right? That in those communities, there is not going to be personal automotive ownership, that it just, it just won't work anymore. But he was saying that, you know, there's fifteen of those in China. And so as you talk about the amount of, and again, we are not urban when you look at it from a global perspective. But the amount of cars that you'd have to put into a place and how you'd park and have those land use decisions, you just don't have the options. And again, it's one of the things that, you know, I can recall in the not-too-distant future, bugging our economic development team, saying that we should put a parking structure next to the call center here that was across the street. And then I went to a US Conference of Mayors and came back and said, that is the worst idea I've ever had. Because we are just not going to need that kind of parking. The technology is going to solve a lot of, not solve, it's going to change a lot of land use decisions that I think we've held tightly to, which is like parking standards. That, you know, it's much, it's a much smarter thing to do to incentivize a rideshare or a taxi or an RT or something to get people to where you want without having them drive their car and leave it somewhere. And I know I've encouraged some of our other very large events, you know, Fourth of July, I think, is one of the good examples coming up soon. There's another one around October that I think the Blue Angels will be at that I'm not usually allowed to talk about here. But I'll just say that there's another one where there's a ton of parking, and there may be some way more efficient ways to get people to that without having them bring their car with them.
Like the Ollie?
Maybe. But then again, imagine how, just as an example, things at Mather, like the airshow, where if we could somehow figure out how we could concentrate getting jump bikes or other things like that up to the Mather Field RT stop and get people to use our new trail all the way to the airport. How great would that be? And just one last thing, what I think is really funny about that is I had an employee three years ago, they got tickets to go to the airshow, assuming that if they took light rail to that station, that they'd be able to get to the airshow, realized when they got off that there wasn't an easy way to get there, had to get back on light rail, go back home to South SAC, get in their car and drive, and only saw the last fifteen minutes of the Blue Angels. So even people that I know really well that called me to, as they got off of the light rail station to say, how do I get there? And I said, you can walk, or you can go home and get your car. So those kinds of expectations for some people just around this region that may not have ever attended, they assume that that's how it's going to work, and it doesn't. So something to think about. Thank you.
Actually, first, what, three years? We tried really hard with RT, and RT just wasn't capable of dealing with it at that point.
But now we have a very great trail to get there.
And that's a really good point.
Yeah.
But it's a great example in that RT doing that particular mission was cost prohibitive. Because I think the first year, it was like a hundred-thousand-dollar bill, but it was quickly going to go to a quarter of a million dollars a year just for them to run a shuttle during the airshow, which that destroyed the budget of the event. It wasn't, it wasn't doable. So the board of the airshow took the, you know, brave task and just said, we can't do this. People have to find another way here. But that illustrates sort of the change and the evolution we're in. And that's old-school, big-bus transit versus
What if we call Jump and see what they would do?
Or Uber and Lyft and say, hey, we got, we got this thing we want to do. What would it cost? I can guarantee you, it wouldn't be a quarter of a billion dollars.
Or something like Via. I'll give you an example from the Puget Sound region. King County Metro established a relationship with Via approximately a year ago along a section of, I think there's six light rail stations along this particular section of the Rainier Valley, and it's divided up into zones. Today, Via is delivering forty-five hundred people a day to the light rail that runs to the Rainier Valley in less than a year. And almost every one of those folks before were non-transit riders. So the future is coming on us very, very quickly. It's finding what's going to work in that particular environment and the right partner to implement it.
Via the car, Via the car-sharing one?
No, it's the West SAC.
It's the West Sacramento, yeah, it's a, it's a group ride, group ride application and operator, actually.
You've got some great graphics in here that talk about the evolution, evolving nature of this technology.
Yes.
And to reflect on what Donald said, you do hear, I guess you could call them futurists or people trying to predict what's going to happen in this space, saying, it's going to be twenty years before we see decent implementation. You've got another group saying it's two years till we have decent implementation. And the reality is, we really don't know. We've got stuff, unpredictable things going on in the legislature. Like this year, there was a bill that literally would say, if you're going to operate an Ollie, then the transit agency must have a paid driver on it at all times, even if an Ollie has six passengers. So that's the old big-bus transit union system fighting back against, they're basically saying, keep buying the buggy whips, put them on those automobiles, right? So, but my point is, this is a really dynamic, unpredictable, unpredictable situation.
When I started Nelson Nygaard twelve years ago now, we were, we did a lot of community surveys. We still do a lot of community surveys. At that time, I can remember conversations about, we're going to have to change away from phone surveys because we're getting ten to twenty percent saturation of non-landline households. They're using cell phones. And I thought, oh, that's really odd. Who would ever give up their landline? Well, I can tell you right now, I no longer have a landline. So, you know, there you go, in just a little bit more than a decade, we've gone from a very small percentage to a very high percentage of homes that do not have landlines anymore. We're all connected airlessly now. And so the disruption is absolutely, with technology, is absolutely a possibility. And I think it's just understanding how quickly it's going to happen and whether the bureaucracy helps it or gets in its way.
Any other questions? And then, okay, I'm going to ask our city clerk if we have any cards on this.
We do not.
Anyone that's left in the audience that wants to speak on this item? I don't see anyone, so I want to ask, we have a motion.
Are we actually approving the mobility master plan?
Yes, we are.
It's the approval of the plan.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'll move this as our recommendation.
And I'll second it.
And a roll call on that?
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor McGarvey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item 12.2, ask our city clerk to announce the subject, please.
Discussion and direction of AB 626, micro-enterprise home kitchen operations.
And Darcy? And some other folks.
Good evening again, Mayor McGarvey and members of the council, Darcy Clark with the Planning Department. With me this evening, we have Ryan Taylor, Neighborhood Services Supervisor, and Joe Cuthar, Building Official. The purpose of tonight's meeting is a discussion and direction on Assembly Bill 626, and specifically, council's desire to either support or object to the allowance of what we call micro-enterprise home kitchens, or MECOs, within the city and how that message should be conveyed to the county border supervisors. So you're probably wondering, why does it say county border supervisors? But we'll explain that in our presentation. Just a little bit of background on AB 626, MECOS. It was adopted into law in September of two thousand and eighteen. And basically, what this states is that micro enterprise home kitchens can be allowed as a new type of retail food facility operated by residents from their private homes. There's currently an assembly bill on the floor right now, waiting to be signed this month, AB 377, which really just strengthens the various types of regulations for food safety and handling for the specific bill. So additionally, MECOS may not be approved until the local jurisdiction with the local enforcement agency. So in this case, Environmental Management Division, they're the department with, under the county that would issue any sort of a food service type permit. So therefore, the county board of supervisors would be the ultimate authority that would elect to either opt into this, opt out, or do nothing at this time.
Could we stop just a minute? And, I mean, I read your, your PowerPoint. Could we just jump up and explain what the heck this is?
Sure. So I was just, we're, we're going to get to that and what it is and what it means. So what is, what is a MECOS and why are, why are we looking at this tonight? So California is one of the leading ag producers within the country. And part of that sort of focuses on farm-to-fork and the importance of being able to utilize local grown produce and supporting local small businesses. So as part of this assembly bill, if you look at the bill and sort of the reasoning as to why the policymakers took a look at this, is they were looking at a way to have some additional economic opportunities for other socioeconomic backgrounds to be able to allow them to do some smaller scale type commercial kitchen developments out of their home. So that's really the basis of how this sort of came to be. We'll explain a little bit more about what it is and what it means. But really, the long and the short of it is, as a resident within a county where you opt in, you could essentially prepare foods out of your home. And there's limits on the number of meals, and then you sell those meals to other people.
Okay, but, so this is, this is not the, this is not the lovely señora who sells tamales out of the back of her car?
This is targeted towards that, yes.
But, but in addition, you could actually go into her house and eat them there?
Correct. So this would allow you to have somebody come pick up the food you prepare? You could deliver that food to the person, or they can come into your home and eat the food.
Would this allow the people that sell, that do the wedding cakes out of our, we have a big wedding cake community in Rancho Del Sol, if you know that.
We do.
Yeah. And so would this allow them to now cook out of their house?
Correct.
Oh, okay. But that would get rid of the need of us having a cool kitchen, right?
A commercial?
No, no.
I think this might stimulate it.
Right. This, this could, this could help incubate those ideas to the point where they need a commercial kitchen.
Right. As a matter of fact, when, when Diane and Kurt and I were in Washington DC a couple of years ago, and we went to see the, the commercial kitchen, the, one of the ladies there had been baking cupcakes at home, and her, it was just like with sugar bake, her, she was so successful, she had to go out and find a commercial location because she couldn't handle the volume in her kitchen anymore.
I, I think the old adage for this was that, that people cooking and producing food in their homes weren't producing it safely, that they didn't understand the safety standards as far as preparing and handling food, and that was causing illness and all kinds of other problems. I think the point of this bill was to say, if you come up with a policy and a plan to make sure that these people understand what they're doing, and there's some sort of certification, business licensing and whatnot, inspection of the, of their home or what they're going to use to, to, to cook and produce in, that you should allow them to do those things. Because there's a lot of people out there doing it that we may be running around ticketing, right? You know, and, and, you know, what was it? Was it Berkeley where, you know, they, they tried to, you know, ticket the hot dog vendor that was out in front of, right? Just trying to make a buck, everything's safe and fine, but he didn't have the right permit.
Will this allow my kids to sell lemonade out front?
Yes.
To get a ticket?
Well, that was Texas, so we don't have that problem here anyways. So, but, but, but again, a good example of where you can create a process for, for people to do things that they may already be doing, that they aren't harming or endangering people, and you can make sure they're not doing that. And you're, yeah, and you're, you're incubating economic development. That'd be great.
That's why this page four is important.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Ryan Taylor, Neighborhood Services Supervisor. I would like to discuss some of these key parameters of micro enterprise home kitchen operations. Food preparation is limited to thirty meals per day or sixty individual meals per week. Customers may dine in, pick up, or have food delivered. Food shall be prepared and consumed on the same day. MECOS may only have one full-time employee, not including household or family members. Operations may not exceed fifty thousand dollars in verifiable gross annual sales. No business license requirements are written into the law. Zoning ordinances cannot prohibit MECOS if authorized by the county. Food manager certification and food handler cards are required for food employees. Notably, AB 626 includes restrictions on local control. I would like to share a few of those key restrictions. No business license requirements written into the law, into the law, the law is silent. Zoning ordinance cannot prohibit MECOS. Therefore, residential zones cannot be rezoned and must allow MECOS. No parking requirements. No building modification or upgrades are required to establish a MECO. No local city enforcement. The authorized enforcement agency would be EMD, West Sacramento County. No additional sanitation requirements.
So, the, the business about the sanitation requirements. As, as everyone will remember, one of the big issues that we had when we first revived the Fourth of July was the fact that it was very difficult for people to get their heads around the fact that they, the Rotary Club could no longer show up and simply sell, grill and sell hot dogs right there. And the, the local Boy Scout troop couldn't bring their snow cone machine and sell snow cones because you had to be enclosed, you had to have ice, you had to be able to hold food at a certain warm temperature or cold temperature, or whatever was appropriate to what you're selling. So even though environmental management is supposed to inspect these things, the people doing it are not required to follow the sanitation requirements that you find in the California Uniform Food Facility Retail Law, known as CERFOL. Right, Joe?
That is correct. They, there are requirements for food safety handling. They do have to get certified like any person working in a restaurant. They do have to provide a business plan, for lack of a better term, to the health department for their permit. So that has to cover everything from preparation to sanitation, how they're preparing, what they're preparing. They have to list the food products they're preparing. They can't just, you know, one day make a turkey and the next day make tamales. They have to follow their plan. The health department is the local enforcement agency for everything. The, the local jurisdictions have no input into that unless they're asked. So the sanitation issue is also the plumbing.
Okay, so I'm reading this sentence incorrectly, then. It's not no additional sanitation over your normal kitchen. It's no additional sanitation requirements over the Uniform Food Facility Retail Law?
No, they're not required to follow the same rules as a restaurant. They can use a kitchen sink from a residence. They can use residential hood system. They don't have to put anything commercial in, grease interceptors, any of that stuff. They use the normal sewer system, the normal sink, their normal countertops, everything. So they don't have to follow the same directions that, say, a restaurant has to follow with non-porous surfaces and, you know, three compartment sinks and those kind of things. Those are the sanitation requirements they don't have to follow. They do still have to be clean, and they do have to report that for their permit. But they're inspected annually unless there's a complaint. So there's not a, a lot of oversight in that side of it.
Yeah, if I may elaborate, it's, it's said, it's stated negatively on the slide, no additional sanitation requirements. But I really think the thrust of it is that the sanitation requirements are not equivalent to the requirements you would have for a traditional restaurant. So as opposed to, so there will be annual inspections that EMD will do on the facilities. But as far as a lot of the specifics required, you know, holding room temperature for food and such, that's applied to a traditional restaurant, won't be applied for the MECOS.
So, so Joe talked about, unless there were a complaint, the prob... So what's the, so what's the safeguard against the complaint being because somebody came down with something awful? Like, like the people who've been, like the problems with the romaine or, or whatever? Yeah.
As far as I can tell, reading the law, there really isn't a lot addressed about that. The complaint can be made to the health department, and then they will investigate like they do with any
Sure.
commercial operation.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, the law restricts a lot of local, when I say local, I mean municipal or city control over enforcement of this program. And it does put it in the hands of the county. Obviously, the county would be the one that would be the lead agency that would be receiving such complaints of any bacteria, foodborne illnesses, or the like. And then they would go through their channels to report it. The, the city would have a pretty hands-off role if the county does opt in to this program.
So, okay, can I ask a clarifying question here? So, the, what's the question for us with this? Is there an action, or if the county board of supervisors tomorrow decides that they're implementing this, that's it? So are you just informing us this might happen? Or is this something where if we pass an ordinance today, then it can't be superseded by the county two months from now or something?
So the question for the council tonight is that a few months ago, county brought all the jurisdictions together, and we discussed this, the MECOS. And what they looked to each agency that was in the room is, could you please go back to your policymakers and bring forth some sort of a support to opt into this, or an opt-out, or to do nothing? And then they would take that to the board of supervisors under consideration when they make the final decision.
But ultimately, if we say, for example, if we say not opt-in, and the county does it anyways, they could, they could force this upon us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I want to understand. Okay.
So did the budget they adopted the other day have additional environmental management personnel built into it?
No, I think they cut that department.
I don't believe they have, they, they had a significant budget problem just to fix, so...
And they cut, they cut a ton of it out of enforcement stuff.
I don't anticipate that there would be any more stuff.
That's not a department with, that is overloaded with, with people.
No.
It's my understanding, I've had a discussion with Cyrus, that they were asking the cities, all seven of them, what they think. Are they for it, are they against it, or neutral on it? And a couple of them have said no. So they're waiting for the others to say yes or no also.
Yeah, so I guess my initial reaction is, I'm very intrigued by the idea. I, I would want to understand better the county's plan for enforcement, especially around foodborne issue, foodborne illnesses and other things like that, and how they would be able to handle whatever this would be. Because some of this, like, how do we know that it's thirty a day or sixty a week? And who's counting that? And who's verifying that they're not spending more than fifty thousand a year? Are we, are they collecting audits of every one of these little guys? I'm assuming not. And they're supposed to be reporting gross sales to who? So I, looking at these, I would probably most likely want us to opt in because I think it's taking a, a part of our economy that is essentially a shadow part of our economy that's trying to, you know, make tamales around the holidays to pay for, for Christmas. Or lumpia, or all kinds of other things.
See, you wouldn't have made it worse.
I did, right. And so, so there, there's a lot of these things that, you know, and for charity events and things like that, I think there's exemptions anyways. But, but when they're trying to, you know, sell some of this stuff, I think the, the dining within someone's home, I think comes, again, very much intended for an urban community where you're in a large apartment complex and someone wants to make enough food for people on their floor and sell it to them, and they're, that's how they're making ends meet or whatever. I don't necessarily see that as much as, you know, somebody's going to just go open a restaurant in their house. But, but, I, I think that... But, but I think that is one, one thing that I, I would like to understand is, how do we make sure that we don't end up with something where someone has converted their three-bedroom house in a suburban area into thirty meals a night? Right? And what does that do to parking and a whole bunch of other issues that can come up with it? So, I mean, there are some reasons to be concerned, but I'm much more intrigued to figure out how to make this work than how to stop it. Yeah.
Okay, so about ten years ago, I'm thinking, the state fixed some of the food laws that had just become completely illogical. For instance, there was a wonderful member of the board of supervisors in Sutter County or Yuba County, who was a farmer, and his wife was making preserves and jelly. And they were selling them at the same roadside stand that they sold their, their fruit and vegetables. And somebody complained, and their county health department came along and told her she couldn't sell her, her preserves and jams anymore. And so the, the state fixed that sort of thing so that you can, you can do that kind of thing now. But there's some loose ends here that, that just haven't been tied up from my perspective. The, the first one would be, who in the world at EMD is going to have time to, to, to either respond to complaints or to do anything proactive in terms of, of managing the, managing this, when they don't have enough people to go around already? In terms of gross receipts, where's the, what's the mechanism for Board of Equalization that apparently doesn't exist anymore, or franchise tax, or somebody to, to have somebody report gross sales? They can't, they can't manage what's going on with the, the marijuana business as it is and, and get appropriate sales reported there. How are they going to take on this one also? When you look at the numbers, this thing about thirty meals a day, nobody's going to get rich doing that. That's, that's your normal party. I, I know Bob, I suspect, has as many people in his family as I do. And you throw, you throw any size decent party, and you've got thirty-eight people there on any given evening, and, and...
And that's a Saturday at the McGarvey.
Absolutely. And, and Donald's right, you know? How, how do you park? If we're concerned about family daycare centers, not, not parking people all over the streets, you know, what are you going to do with those thirty-eight people who've all come to eat dinner at your house? And, and I just, there's, from my perspective, there's just too many loose ends that nobody has either addressed, or they don't know enough about the practicalities of preparing food for a group of people to have really addressed it in this bill.
I think the bill just kind of says, it's, I want your opinion, but your opinion doesn't really make any difference if you're for it or against it. The county's going to make a decision, and their decision is going to override anything you want to do on it.
Yeah.
And that's kind of the way the bill is written. Now, if this 377 is supposed to do something that'll kind of clarify some of that, but I think you're, you're right, Linda. The, how do you have the county come up with the money to inspect these things? Are we selling meals here in... Are we selling meals here and cockroaches there? I don't know, you know, it's...
Bob, I think the other side of the, and again, Linda, I hear you, I think the thing that we need to keep in mind is, without this, there's a whole bunch of enforcement to do to stop people from doing things, that they don't have the money or the resources or the time to do now. Right? So, right now, this, this activity is illegal. You're not supposed to be cooking in your house and selling it and doing all those things. So, we're not supposed to be having people make tamales in their homes or all of these other things. And they don't have the time or the ability or the resources to stop them now. I think the point of this is to try to come up with some sort of policy and program to where you can legitimize this, they don't have to do as much enforcement, and they can actually, it, it comes down to the same conversation that we had when we talked about egg laying hens in yards. We had, I mean, the person that came to me was, and I assumed it was because they were annoyed at their neighbor having hens, and it turns out, no, they have hens, they want some sort of way to make it legal and legitimize and pay a fee and have somebody come and make sure that they're doing it the right way, so that it's not illegal. Right? I think the same, the same thing's happening here. There, a lot of these activities are happening, is there a way to make it legal and not worry about having to enforce things that really shouldn't be illegal?
And I completely understand, and it really isn't worth, it isn't worth arguing exercised about, but, but if you, but if you continue with the analogy of the tamales, you can't just make 30 tamales a day, every day, and stop at 30 tamales. Making tamales is a family process that takes, that takes an assembly line, you make a huge quantity of tamales, and, and, and you've made them. And they, you didn't just make 30 this day, and 30 the next, and 30 the next.
I think, Council, if I, if I may, a level of complexity that we see at staff level, if this type of use is authorized, it does, it does create a series of problems with neighborhood, neighborhood problems, neighborhood complaints, without any, potentially, without any ability on the city's staff side to do anything about it.
But can we do anything about it now?
Our enforcement ability, well, at least...
What's our enforcement ability now?
I think at this moment, at this point, those kind of activities are against our municipal code. So we have the ability to take code action, we have the ability, you know, in terms of...
But we don't run the health department, so we can't go and tell them, you're not making this safe. You're saying because they don't have a business license, they're not allowed to do it?
Yeah, so it's, it's not, it's not an authorized activity or business in a house. But, but if we opt in, and if the county allows it, then we are entirely at the mercy of the EMD to enforce the regulations.
But if, but if, but if we don't opt in, you're saying, then we would continue to have our municipal code overriding the county's code?
Unless the county adopts it regardless of what everybody else says.
Yeah, because at this point, county has asked for our, basically has an opinion, and they want us to weigh in, they've asked all jurisdictions. But let's say if we all collectively weighed in and the county decided not to, not to opt in, then we have, we continue under the current code or the current policies. But if they do, then we, we still have the problem. At this point, I think the feedback the county is looking for is whether we are in support or opposed to the idea.
So I guess my vote would be none of these. It would probably, it would probably be along the lines of tell the county, don't do it. And then I would ask staff to look at, how do we handle it ourselves to encourage these types of businesses based on the feedback that I just gave you?
Well, we just adopted a revised street vendor ordinance.
We did, yeah, sure, we did.
That's only for the sidewalk vendors.
Okay, so, but theoretically, tamales in your trunk would fall under the category of sidewalk vendor?
Unless the trunk was on a sidewalk.
Not really.
Which is not allowed in the city of Rancho Cordova. So, so I, I think, I think the feedback would be, we don't want to opt into the county's version, because we're not sure how they would enforce it, but I would like to see the city look at, assuming that the county doesn't impose this upon us, that how do we amend our street vendor code to incorporate and deal with the concerns that we have of having somebody do food production within their home?
Your truck's in the parking lot instead of on the sidewalk.
I like the idea. I want to be able...
We don't, we don't want restaurants in neighborhoods like that, like in residential neighborhoods, but I think we do need to figure out, in my opinion, a way to legitimize these activities that I think we all agree are just fine, and have economic, you know, development value to the community. So let's figure out how to do it ourselves, assuming the county doesn't force our hand.
So, under this legislation, what's unique about this legislation, it, the, the status quo right now legally is, is this is prohibited because of all the food retail code laws in large part. It's, the state legislature is allowing for a small exception for those counties that opt in, and if the counties do opt in, then the cities are required to allow MECOS in their city. So unfortunately, the city can't come up with an analogous, or parallel, or better MECO program.
It's... No, 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 I totally get, so what I'm saying is, we should tell the county, we do not want them to do this, and then assuming that they don't do this, then we should pursue our, our own version, is what I'm suggesting. But again, if the county does it, I get it, we don't have any control.
And I, and I apologize, but I think what I'm trying to say is, if the county doesn't opt in, we can't have our own version. This is the only version on the table from the state legislator's perspective.
Okay, so you're right, Frank, but, but let's, let's take Donald's comment and set that aside. It wouldn't, you wouldn't call it a MECO. It would simply be our addition to our sidewalk vendor to say that we are not going to go after the people who are in the parking lot at Christmas time or walking around door-to-door, taking orders for tamales, or, you know, I mean, even at the Moose Lodge, from time to time, there's a lady who makes tamales and everybody says, oh, you know, you sign up, put your name down, and how many you want. There's a fundraiser that goes on from time to time for somebody's kid sports team at Mather that does the same thing. You just, we just would add that to, to local vendors and call it something different.
I think, I think what I'm hearing though, Linda, is that they specifically put in this, in this language that you can't circumvent this version.
Yeah.
That's what you're saying, huh?
That's what I'm saying, but, but I do think there are versions to, to your point, to Councilmember Terry and Councilmember Budget's point, there perhaps would be alternative or creative variants of the MECO legislation that the city could certainly look at to explore, but we just wouldn't want it to be completely analogous.
So again, yeah, I think the feedback, again, this is me, is encourage the county not to adopt it, but that, assuming that happens, that I would encourage staff that this is something that we'd probably want to take up to see how we accommodate the types of things we were just talking about, in an alternative form.
And if we are thinking or looking at the alternative form, then we need to have some policy-level discussions and identifying what that means, so...
Yeah, and I definitely don't think, I mean, that's a workshop at some point.
So we're not asking for a formal roll call, but the sentiment expressed by Councilmember Terry, do the other council members go along with that sentiment? Can we...
I think you should do it.
Just tell the county which way we're going on it, we think yes or no on it.
Yeah, so, okay, so...
I think, I think to Linda's point, and again, I started off thinking, yeah, this is just a great idea, but the fact that, the things that it prohibits us from having anything to do with, and there are, there are a handful of situations in there that could become very disruptive very quickly.
For sure. So, we could do it thumbs up or thumbs down, or I'll make a motion?
I don't think, I don't think we're necessarily looking for motion or formal action, but we're interested to hear from other council members, so we know where the council, which direction the council is leaning.
Okay, so I'm, I'm in favor of opting out?
Yeah, I'm in favor of supporting this sort of business, growing this sort of business, making more opportunity for this sort of business, particularly as it leaves the home and gets into a more commercial environment. I've been excited about the idea of some sort of a, an incubator for, you know, food uses, to the extent that this supports that, I think it's a good thing. I think it fits in with locally grown food ideas that are around our region. So there's a lot to like in this. I am, however, concerned about potential unintended consequences of just a blanket approval, anybody can do this whenever, however, they wish. So I think the wise course is probably splitting the baby and saying, how much can we do on our own in this space without necessarily triggering complete hands-off situation?
Donald?
But recognizing the county has that authority with or without us.
So it's an opt-out or an opt-in?
I think for now, it's an out, but it could be an in, with further expl, with further exploration of it.
So we have Linda and Garrett and David saying out, and Donald?
I think I've talked enough about this.
Okay.
Donald's an out.
Okay.
Again, for now.
Pass on to them, it's out.
Thank you. Do you need, do you have what you need, staff?
Just additional clarification and direction, the county is asking us to convey this message somehow, we can do it in a form of a letter. They've also suggested that we could attend the board of supervisors meeting and speak in our public comment, so which would the council prefer?
Oh, we should send a letter.
Yeah.
Okay, staff will drop the letter for the mayor's signature.
Which one of you wants to go to the county board of supervisors meeting?
It should be really interesting.
Right, don't all raise your hands at once. You can also say my boss.
Thank you, Micah.
Now, that's kind of interesting, you're always, oh, the point, fingers are going...
It's the only government goes up.
I think the letter that nails that, so, yeah.
We'll drop the letter for the mayor's signature.
Okay. 12.3, and just for general information, on the, you see on the top of it, it says no roll call, but this is 12.3, if you'd read that, please?
A resolution of intention to establish the Rancho Cordova Property and Business Improvement District. Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's item is the consideration of a resolution of intention to establish Rancho Cordova's first property and business improvement district. We have not, however, met the legal requirement of receiving petitions from property owners representing 50% or more of the assessment. Thus, no action can be taken on the formation of the proposed district this evening. By taking no action on the resolution, there will not be a public hearing and ballot vote on August the 5th, and the P-Bid will not be formed. Tonight's item will now be informational in nature and will not be continued to a future council meeting. For all the members in the audience and anyone listening at home, a little background on the proposed P-Bid. A property business and improvement district, or otherwise known as a P-Bid, is a specific geographic area where the property owners agree to assess themselves. All of those funds are then collected on the tax rolls and used to provide very specific services within that set geographical area. The services are designed to be above and beyond those that are usually provided by the city or other government agencies. And in this particular case, the services were security and maintenance, marketing and advocacy, improvement programs, and other related administration that you would have in a program such as this. As you may recall, this is the second year we've been working to establish a business and property business, excuse me, a property and business improvement district. This year, we did modify some of the properties that were going to be included, and we added considerably to our outreach team. We have contracted with Civitas advisors to help develop, to help the development, help develop the necessary documentation to create the P-Bid and help outreach and guide us through the process. We established a steering committee comprised of property owners, the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, Civitas city representatives, and provided direction, and all the information provided the direction on the services that were very important for those property owners to establish the P-Bid. Unfortunately, the steering committee exhausted all resources in trying to obtain the required percentage of the signed petitions, and I'll have Diane from the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce speak a little bit more thoroughly on the outreach effort that was undertook.
Good evening once again, Mayor and members of the council. I am Diane Rogers, President and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, and it's my responsibility here to share with you some of the outreach efforts that were made on this particular effort. I want to do let you know that the chamber and our board absolutely supported the development and establishment of the P-Bid within the designated, designated area. Our efforts of outreach were creative, extensive, and targeted to seek success. Members of our team included the chamber, chamber staff, chamber directors, steering committee members, city staff, consultants, previous signatories, business owners directly impacted by the P-Bid, and actually some community involvement by our different VINS groups. We sent letters to every single property owner, which were carefully crafted with motivating messages. We did emails, which were targeted messaging, this was not generic emails. We made phone calls that were cold calls, warm calls, conference calls, and calls from various degrees of separation. And what I mean by that is, it turned out as an example, you need to know what we did, I guess. We had one chamber member, or a member of our board of directors, it turns out, one of the property owners is his boss's family member, so we used every type of resource and outreach that we possibly could. We did personal visits, we did drop-in unannounced visits, we even hung out in the lobby, I've become quite familiar with the lobby, the folks in the lobby over at the Red Roof Inn, and trying to hope and catch the right individual. We said individual meetings and appointments, and in fact, we talked to folks not only locally but across the country, and part of your team here even scheduled meetings at national conferences to try and track folks down. We used our chamber network, other P-Bids, chamber colleagues, we used relationships between chamber members and the property owners, including the Rancho Cordova Travel and Tourism. We do have specific information on the number of contacts and the specific efforts and copies of everything if you'd like to see, but suffice to say, we feel very confident that the effort we made was as bad as diligent as we possibly could have gotten. But I do want to leave with you the fact that we did develop some wonderful relationships with new property owners and business owners, we increased the awareness of what P-Bids can and do offer in our community, we was a wonderful showcase of what city services are and resources are available and being offered to our community. We learned some ideas about possible resource sharing, and we identified some potential projects that we may take on down the road, such an example of that might be how to manage onsite homelessness training for frontline employees, that was something that came up. So just in summary, that while we are disappointed that we weren't, didn't meet success, I think that Michael will wrap it up with what we did accomplish, but the relationships we built and the efforts were made, we felt very, very good and confident about what the effort that was put forth on behalf of trying to accomplish this. Is there any questions? Do you want the numbers? Good. It is available should you like, so, anyway, thank you. And thanks for the opportunity for having the chamber participate in this, we did really enjoy it and learn a lot, so, and great to work with your team.
Thank you, Diane.
Good evening, the mayor and council. As Diane alluded, I get to finish this presentation. And really, what I want to kind of just highlight is, really, this is not, I think, a failure of effort, but more of a vote of confidence in the city and what the city is actually being able to provide for the community. A lot of times, this is a tool that's, that's provided within the community, it's a tool for supporting public safety, cleanliness, a lot of different ways in the community, and that's what this tool provides. And I think what you've seen as part of this process is, the city is actually doing a great work in the community already, and so there is no overwhelming desire or need from the property owners to, to band together and, and form a P-Bid, because with the different items, the different initiatives that the city is doing, whether it's through homeless outreach, or the cleaning up light rail stops, or the different things that the city is doing, we're doing a great job at that. And I think what has transpired is, not only this relationship building that was able to happen with the property owners, but kind of getting a feel for what really is the needs, and the needs are being met pretty well by the city services. And so, I think as we, as we look to the future, I think this is a tool, and P-Bids and bids and those, those items are tools that a community can use to, to bring an area together, and I think we're more than supportive of, of this tool. But I think looking forward, unless there's an overwhelming kind of voice from the property owners or from the business owners that are, that are really interested in this, I think this effort basically has, we've worked with our partners to try to put it together, but I think it really is a vote of confidence in the city, and so... And so, with that, I'll just end there if you have any questions.
Any questions, anyone?
And I, I, I think it's probably appropriate to say that I love Diane's litany about all of the various contacts, because quite frankly, this is a project that began in ninety-six or ninety-seven, and it has been worked on consistently, not, not, not sequentially necessarily, but consistently brought back over and over and over again. And, and what Micah has to say from my perspective is absolutely accurate, because we started this at the beginning as part of the unincorporated county, knowing that we couldn't do these things, that the county couldn't do these things for us, we would have to do them ourselves at the chamber level, and, and to organize the property owners. And, and it was an offshoot of, of the, the safety project called We Mean Business. So, the next logical step was, was a P-Bid. And as, as Micah so aptly says, as our capacities, as a city have grown, as we have solved many of these problems, completely changed the physical appearance of Folsom Boulevard and continue to work to change the character of the activities on Folsom Boulevard, the more success we have, the less need for the P-Bid there is. And when you look at where there are these organizations in other places and, and what their motivation was at the beginning, it's always the same. And, but as a city, we have addressed these issues, so it's, it's kind of funny that here we are twenty-five years later, but on the other hand, it is absolutely a testament to what's been going on lately, so, thank you. Actually, the thank you to everybody who has worked on this, including, including the familial arm twisting.
Yeah, I think that's, since it started in nineteen ninety-four, and it goes on, but I think since we became a city, we've been able to do so many things that we couldn't do before. You could depend on the county, but you couldn't depend on the county, more or less. And so now, we've been able to say, okay, now that we are a city, we're making our own decisions, and we made some great decisions. And I think we've made the businesses very, very satisfied with what's been accomplished, and they're expecting the same thing, and that's what we're gonna do, is continue to make it better, so. Thank you, everyone, for everything you've done, and if you have any time you make a phone call or something, Diane, let me know.
Can I just thank Ms. Carson Lambeth for her patience in sitting here all night to just hear that we're not moving forward with this, and to thank her for everything she's done in my, for my career, so. If you guys don't know, this is the recruiter that hired me out of college to go into banking, so.
Oh, interesting.
I owe, I owe, I owe all my success to the lady sitting next to Diane over there.
And you still have a job, too, so that's...
Still, I'm, I'm back in banking, actually, recently, yes. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, everyone, on this. Okay, on to the agenda, council requests for future agenda items. Don't see any. Okay, then adjournment, we will adjourn the meeting to closed session in the community boardroom.